Are we, uh, are we up and running, Michelle?
Yes.
Do we need Greg to stay here and talk about this the whole time, too? I'm just, it's to have him stick around, let's do this. Stan Markell, you're good to meet you.
Yeah, pleasure.
And this is Sam Bushman, who's our incoming presiding commissioner.
Sam's here to give the present, but we're the last one, right?
Last county?
Yeah.
Uh, we, and we thought we moved really quick to get you on the agenda.
Yeah, we did.
We just.
(laughing).
He's been right, he's been right in there.
All right, well, welcome, and, uh, the floor is your...
Thank you. Uh, just a little introduction, and I'm, my name is Stan Crawford. I've worked for 31 years out of the Calway Nuclear Plant. Uh, spent 10 years prior to that in the Nuclear Navy.
Can you get him a microphone? I'm sorry.
Doesn't amplify.
It doesn't amplify, but we stream, so that's the only way anybody out there can...
Take it out of there, Michelle.
Okay.
So, uh, as I said...
It's on.
It's on. Okay, good. Uh, as I said, I'm a 31-year veteran at the Calway Plant, retired in 2011. Um, and, uh, for this particular project, they've brought back all retirees to, um, work on this project. So, the only ones that are actually permanent employees working on this project is the project manager and the project engineer. Everyone else is, is, uh, most of them 30-year vets out there. So, I'm sitting in a room of, of a retirement home.[119.03][119.03](laughing). Now I live in Florida, right? So, anyway, um, let's see if I can hit the right button here. The, uh, nuclear industry is very, very regulated, as you well know, and therefore, anything that happens in the nuclear industry, whether it be here or anywhere in the, in the world, it becomes a, a major event for us, and we, uh, look at lessons learned and, and operating experience out of that. Well, when, uh, the Fukushima, and I will call it Fukushima, although the proper pronunciation is Fukushima, but that's too hard to say.[166.31][166.31](laughing) So, we'll call it Fukushima for this presentation. But, um, so, after, after that accident, we sent a near-term, um, group over there, a team, to look at what happened, to, uh, come back with lessons learned from that. Two things that they came back with, one was the fact that, uh, you can plan for any kind of event, but there may be an event that's even greater than that event. And the second thing is, the two things that nuclear power plants need are electricity and water. And without electricity, well, without the water, you don't have, no way of cooling that reactor on down, even after it's shut down. It takes years and years and years to actually cool it completely. It will still boil water. And the second thing is a way of moving that water, and you need electricity to do that. So, and you also need electricity to monitor all your systems. So, uh, those two things, water and electricity, are the two major things that the Fukushima plant actually ended up without. A lot of people wouldn't, in the United States, would not know what that is. That happens to be a, a village of about 5,000 people that was sitting there along the shoreline of, of Japan that was completely wiped out. But everybody, just about everybody in the United States, I'd say 99.9% know, whenever that flashes up, exactly what we're talking about. We're talking about a nuclear power plant that had an issue after that, uh, major earthquake in that tsunami. And that's the picture that everybody has in their mind, because that's what was on Fox and CNN and, and all the networks. A little bit more serene look of that plant prior to, uh, the, the, uh, event that happened. Uh, you can see the flood walls out there in the, or the tsunami walls, as they call them, out in the Bay Area there. The, the four units that you see in the middle of your screen there, um, were built in, like, the early 1960s. Uh, there's two units that you can see up in the upper right-hand corner there that were built in the late 70s. And as you can see, they probably learned a little bit from the first build, uh, to the second build, because they built those two units higher and further away from the shoreline. And actually, those two units were not affected at all by the tsunami. All six plants were sa, were in safe condition after the earthquake. Everything was fine, uh, until the tsunami hit and, and wiped out their fuel tanks to their, uh, emergency generators. And at that point, they were sitting there just on battery power. Only three people actually, uh, lost their lives at that plant. One was a crane operator that was crushed during the, uh, actual earthquake. Two other operators at the plant, uh, drowned during the tsunami. They were down in, in the, uh, unit itself, looking around, trying to see if there was any, uh, adverse effects from the, from the earthquake. Uh, it happened about 2:46 in the afternoon. Um, the epicenter was about 80 miles offshore. Uh, magnitude was a 9.0, and it was the worst, uh, earthquake and tsunami that had ever been in, in Japan history. Uh, first-ever time that the, uh, the, uh, total, um, government went to emergency response. So, um, it was a national disaster for Japan. U.S. plants are, are built, uh, to a design basis. Uh, what they do as far as events go, such as natural events, they look back in history at the worst-case natural events, and they actually design the plants to withstand those events, and then actually even add some margin in there, so that even, even worse, even, uh, a worst-case accident would be, uh, still within the design basis. Uh, even Hurricane Katrina, as bad as Hurricane Katrina was for, um, uh, the Louisiana area, we had a nuclear power plant down there only about 20 miles from, um, that, uh, center of that hurricane, and, uh, it shut down safely and operated safely throughout that, that event. So, um, but the U.S. industry decided to develop what's called a flexible strategy, or the FLEX Plan, to look at the once-in-a-million-years types of, type of event. And this FLEX Plan is a, is a response plan that would prevent, uh, this type of an event becoming a, uh, nuclear event. We want to make sure that we are not the front page on the, uh, on the newspaper after a major event like this. Just to show you what happens to your, uh, infrastructure, um, all the, all the electrical units that were within the area shut down, shut down safely, but, uh, of course, whenever they shut down, you're not putting power out to the grid. Therefore, uh, you had about 4 million households, uh, without power, uh, about 10 days of rolling blackouts throughout that, uh, that, um, whole event. And, of course, your public transportation, your telecommunications, food and water supply, all become, uh, a major, uh, resource at that time. So, uh, public consequences, as I just showed you, extended loss of, of, um, electrical power. Uh, there's infrastructure damage throughout, uh, off-site response capabilities are impacted, uh, hard to get to certain places whenever roads are blocked, and, and as you could see, uh, when, uh, places look like, uh, that poor fishing village looked. Um, local, state, emergency disaster declarations, uh, most likely will be a state, at least a state emergency, if not, uh, a national emergency, if something like that would happen in this area. And, of course, there's going to be a big competition for resources. Uh, resources is going to be at a premium. So, movement of support personnel and equipment, uh, for the nuclear plant, uh, from other locations is going to be impeded unless, uh, the industry's response capability is adequately recognized and incorporated into the state, the state's emergency plan and our emergency planning zone counties, which is, um, Montgomery, Gaskinade, Osage, and Calway, of course. Again, uh, the tsunami damaged the onsite diesel generators, especially their fuel supplies were lost. They were, they had downed power lines, uh, all throughout the area, and it's called a station blackout when that happens, whenever you're only running off of what's on your, in your battery banks at that particular time. They were unable to cope with the extended condition. Uh, they could not pump the water that they needed to continue to cool that, uh, fuel, and the result was major, uh, fuel damage. Actually, the fuel started to melt, and when that happens, hydrogen is given off. And when hydrogen, uh, builds up, that's where the explosions came from that you saw on, uh, on your newscasts. Um, United States Nuclear Power Plants, uh, studied this event, as I said, and they worked with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the Nuclear Energy Institute, and the Institute of Power Operations to put together this FLEX strategy to ensure that the industry is prepared for the once-in-a-million-year natural event. So, what is a flexible strategy? It just relies on portable equipment, uh, to protect against, uh, these most likely event, or unlikely events, uh, events that go beyond the design basis of the nuclear power plants. For six to eight hours, you're, you're counting on your, your batteries. Uh, that's about what, uh, you have as far as lifespan for those batteries, is about six to eight hours. The second phase is portable equipment, and that portable equipment would be stored onsite, and I'll show you how that's done here in just a minute. But, uh, that would transition us into what's called Phase Three, which is for an indefinite response, and that's counting on off-site equipment being brought in, uh, to help, uh, pump water to the plant. During this last refuel, you can see there the, the white, uh, piping coming up, uh, this modification and others just like it were put in throughout the plant, where you can just unscrew that, uh, end piece off of the end cap off of that hu, uh, that pipe and hook, um, flexible hose to it, and run that flexible hose to a diesel brand pump and pump water, uh, into the plant. As far as electrical goes, uh, you run cables from your, uh, portable generators that you park, uh, outside the plant, run the cables inside, and, and it's kind of like plug-and-play, just match your colors, colors up and, and hook it up to the electrical system and, uh, start powering the safety-related equipment in the plant. As I said, uh, this equipment's stored onsite, and we are building this building right here at this particular time, and that's, that's what it looks like as of today. Um, supposed to withstand 500 mile-an-hour winds, it's watertight, uh, earthquake, supposedly earthquake-proof. Uh, as you can see, there's two-foot, two-foot of concrete on the walls, there's a, um, a foot of concrete, uh, ceiling on that building, and it sits on a pad of about 10-foot-deep concrete. So, has its own power supply, has its own, uh, own ventilation, uh, everything like that, and it will house generators such as this, it will house pumps such as this one right here, diesel-generated pumps, so have all the hoses fittings and everything to, um, maintain the pro, the safety-related systems within the plant, to keep it shut down and safe. No single point of failure, so every piece of this equipment that you need, you have to. Um, so, it'll all be stored in that building. That's for the, that's for up to 72 hours. Uh, after that, we're talking with, uh, what's called the Strategic Alliance for FLEX Emergency Response, which is now called SAFER. It's a national response centers, two of them, one in Memphis, Tennessee, and one in Phoenix, Arizona. Uh, these, uh, these places have enough, uh, equipment to supply for nuclear units. They will bring in larger equipment, such as like these four 4160 KV generators, and these things are huge. They can, they can, uh, power a lot of equipment, uh, for us for a long period of time. Whenever we, uh, whenever we plan for this thing, we have to plan that there is no resources available within 25 miles of the plant, none. So, um, we have to make sure that we can fly this equipment in if we have to, so we have a, um, a memorandum of understanding with Columbia Regional Airport. Um, we have to have a place to actually stage this equipment, so that, uh, we have worked out with our, um, our Ameren Missouri Gas, uh, Yard up in, um, Columbia to, uh, take this equipment to that area and stage it all outside the 25 miles. Uh, this is just a little diagram of kind of what happens. The phone call comes from the plant, uh, to the regional response center, and they either truck it to the Memphis, uh, Phie, Memphis Airport or the Phoenix Airport, whichever response center is, uh, the one that we choo, that we call. They'll fly this equipment to the local airport or truck it out to the staging area. Uh, we have a contract with FedEx, uh, to do the trucking and to do the flying of this equipment into, into the area. Uh, from that, uh, from that staging area, first of all, there's just a picture of Columbia Regional Airport, and actually, in talking with them, they are adding, uh, additional runway space to, to the airport. And the primary place for our staging area would be the plant itself, of course, but if that's not, uh, available at the, that particular time when we get the equipment in, again, and this is a poor picture, but it's all that, uh, I could get off of, uh, Google Maps, but up in the upper part of that lower picture there, you can see all that dirt area, that's all asphalt now, um, and, uh, that is our gas yard for, gas lay-down yard for Ameren, Missouri. So, they can bring our equipment in, stage it, and, uh, send it back out to the plant. They also can handle helicopter operations at that site. This is just a little rendition, uh, that they put together. As you can see in the left, left part of your screen there, you've lost all off-site power. Um, as far as your first phase goes, you've got your installed battery banks and your pumps to operate for six to eight hours. Uh, then in the upper part of that, uh, picture, you can see your portable backup pumps, hoses, and diesel generators would come out of that massive storage building that we're building onsite. Uh, that would be for the next 72 hours, and then after that, then the regional response, and you, they're showing a helicopter and also a, a tanker bringing in diesel fuel, um, to operate us, to keep us operating for indefinite period. From that, from, uh, the airport or from our lay-down yard, our, um, primary route would be down 63 and out ni, out to the plant on 94. Of course, if it's an earthquake, uh, we're not sure exactly what kind of condition Highway 94 would be in, and, uh, so, the secondary route would be I-70, which we really want to stay away from because of all the traffic through Columbia, and then the only way you can go is down 54 and right through this, right through Fulton, uh, out to the plant. There's no way of getting to Route O without going through downtown Fulton, and, uh, in case of a major earthquake, we're not sure what kind of conditions that might be in. So, we may be to the point of doing helicopter operations to bring this, bring this equipment in. But as you can see, we skirt your, we skirt your county here, and we want to make sure that everybody knows what's going on, and that's basically what this presentation's all about, is the fact that you guys know that in case of a major event like this, that we do have a plan, um, that we've put in place. So, we need to ensure that there's awareness of this FLEX Plan, state, counties, and some private entities will be asked to sign MOUs to document that they understand that there's a plan in place. We need to emphasize that this plan is a prevention plan, not a response, not really a response plan, it's to prevent, uh, a problem at the power plant. Uh, we're, our number-one priority, of course, is the health and safety of the general public. We'll require access to the plant for personnel and equipment, uh, and, uh, we're going to be, uh, requesting, uh, resources, and those requests will come through the State Emergency Management Agency, and, uh, so, they're, they're the ones that will be the incident command center for any kind of event like this. Of course, roads may be blocked, bridges may be impassable, priorities are going to be with the incident commander, whoever that might be. Uh, there will be a need to save lives and accommodate needs of residents, of course, we understand that, but we also need to get equipment and staff to the plant to prevent any further problems. So, as far as ground goes, clearing roads, we've, uh, made presentations to the Department of Transportation, uh, also for reinforcing bridges, and also, uh, the Missouri National Guard has set in on, on this presentation and is aware of, uh, the plan. Uh, we'll need to move traffic, of course, that involves law enforcement. We've made presentations to, um, to the Highway Patrol, to the Water Patrol, um, to Boone County, because of our lay-down area up there in, in Boone County. So, made presentations to them to understand what we're doing. Air, airport and airspace, of course, uh, we're going to need right away, and we, like I said, we do have a memorandum of understanding with the airport. And Hilo, Hilo operations, um, these company, this company that has the two, uh, places in, in Phoenix and Memphis, they have helicopter, uh, companies that they have contracted with, but in case that doesn't happen for some reason, we've also talked the Air National Guard, uh, to use their helicopters. And, of course, there's other necessities that's going to be required to be moved out to the plant. Potable, potable water will be probably at a premium, food, shelter, and clothing. And then for the equipment, of course, you've got to continuously move fuel out there for these generators to continuously run, and also, uh, any kind of parts that we would need in case something breaks down. The other, that last slide just talked about the memorandum of understanding. Like I said, we're, we've got memorandums of understanding with our four emergency planning zone counties, um, with, uh, the airport. Uh, we also will have letters with, uh, Jeff City Oil as far as moving, uh, fuel, um, and, um, of course, with the State Emergency Management Agency. But, uh, since your proximity here, close, close by, we want you to know that we do have a plan in place, and that there probably will be requests coming out from the State Emergency Management Agency, and the first time, we don't want the first time you hear about the FLEX Plan is during the event itself. So, I have a feeling that this presentation will probably be made every couple of years or so, as, as they, you know, turn over people and things like that, but we do have a memorandum of understanding, and if you have time, I can read it to you, or whatever, however you want me, want to do it, or you can read it. Um, it's just, uh, you can go ahead and take a look at that. It's, uh, asking for one signature from the presiding commissioner, but, um, talks about, uh, the fact that you understand that there is a plan in place. It's, you can take that out, that's only in there just to keep my sweaty hands off It doesn't hold either party accountable, really, to tell you the truth.
So, in the event of a major disaster or something, how many millions of gallons of water will you be pumping through there at any one time?
That's, that's a real good question. I will tell you that we are putting in 500, 500,000-gallon tanks, two of them, that will be in a hardened facility, just like this equipment is setting in, that will be sitting there just for that particular, uh, operation. Um, so, there's a million gallons of water there. Um, we also have a 30-day supply in a pond there that's called the Ultimate Heat Sink, but they won't let, let us take, uh, that into account, because they feel like there could possibly be debris in that, in that, so it would be hard pumping all of that, uh, volume into the plant. You might be able to pump it through portable pumps and get it in there, but they won't let us account for the actual safety features that are actually there. So, uh, to, to, I really don't have an answer for you, but it would be quite, quite a bit of water that would be pumped through there, but it would be cooled, um, through our, through the same ways that we're cooling the water now through our cooling tower, uh, then pump back, it would be regenerated to some degree.
My only concern is just, you know, as water becomes more of a premium, and we're seeing water restrictions all over the country, and I assume that it'll probably get worse.
Mm.
Is that, you know?
We can, we, I know...
We got to produce electricity, but at the same time, we're...
Right.
If we're using a lot of our natural resources, and water's going to be a big one, but, uh...
Well, we take our water from the Missouri River, of course, uh, and that would be also a possibility to pump it to tankers out of the Missouri River, bring it up, and actually run it through our, through our system and, and...
Is that water radioactive afterwards, or is it just warm?
It's just warm.
So, it can go back in the river?
It, that, that is cooling water, yes, that, that we use for that. Now, the water that is actually used in the plant itself is, once it goes into the plant, it stays in the plant, uh, so, you don't, you know, you don't, don't remove it at all, you just remove heat from it with the other source, with the, the other source.
The other water.
So, yeah, the wa, the water go, the water that goes back into the Missouri River, uh, is cleaner than the water that we take out, of course. Um, in fact, I've known, we've had to report to DNR before when our pumps failed down at the river, and actually, whenever they would fail taking water out, some water dumps back in the river, that's our responsibility, even though it didn't even make it to the pump, it's just in the pipe, it just went back to the river, we have to ma, we have to make that recordable, so...
All right. Well, this, the MOU looks fine, no issues with it, so, I'm going to go ahead and approve that, entertain a motion to approve the MOU.
Second.
Motion's second. Call roll, please.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
By roll call vote, the MOU is approved.
I'll also include that in our local work job, right, explain more. Yeah, that will happen in there.
I think we have to get the clerk to sign that, don't we? It doesn't have a spot for it, but I think we do have to have a clerk countersign it, since it's in agreement.
And I can, uh, this back up here.
So, we can get it to you, just...
Okay, and I can leave one of these with you to just tell on...
All right. In fact, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask this be put in the record, Michelle?
Yes.
Here you go. That's to go on the record. That way, it's officially recognized, it's in the record of the county commission, it'll go with that MOU in the official file.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Very, very informative, and thanks for the service you did on this.
If you can think, if you think about what the, the people over in Japan were thinking when they were in that control room, trying to figure out where they were going to get water and that kind of thing, they had no plan. They had no plan, so, at least we have a plan.
We have a plan, and I don't think the tidal wave will hit the plant.
I don't think we have a tidal wave at all. We have to worry about that, uh, 500 mile-an-hour tornado, or whatever, that we've never seen before, or even ice storm or snowstorm that could take, take down electricity within 25 miles, but we would be sitting there maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
Maybe, but our, I will say that our plant was built late 70s, we have a lot of, a lot of hidden things in place that is not in place at all.
Valuable part of our mid-Missouri community, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Stan.
Thanks, Stan.
Have a Merry Christmas.
You, too.
Thank you. We got this, uh, the light issue. Greg?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can somebody run and get us a copy of that signed and sealed everything? Debbie's going to do that, okay.
Thank you.
All right, Greg. All right, Greg.
I think it was Wednesday when you all were doing your meetings. Y'all told Debbie to send me an email, excuse me, to get three or four bids for the lighting outside. I got an email from Debbie saying to do that and have it ready for today.
Okay.
What I have done, called several places, and you can see what the prices are for the lights. And then the second page is, the only bids I had back is of 7:30 this morning.
For installation?
For installation and stuff, yes.
How quickly can they do it?
The lights are eight to 10 days to get them in.
Regardless of who we go with?
Regardless
Nobody carries anything in stock?
Not those, not for the LEDs, no.
Okay.
They probably can get them a little quicker. That's what, everybody was about the same lead time.
And as far as installation goes, as soon as lights are in, they can do it?
Yep.
We gotta get it done and if we have choice. Gentlemen, I defer to you all's expertise.
The lowest one, right? And the gray bar.
Yeah.
Yeah, gray bar's $30 lower than Phillips.
Yeah, that's what he's gonna just get
Why's the cost to put them in so much?
They've gotta re-deal that piping.
All the conduit has to be redone?
There ain't a hundred feet of it.
They've gotta go down. I don't, it's prevailing wage, too. They're gonna put all new conduit, all new boxes. Everything's gonna be all new except for the stands that they're, they're gonna reuse all those.
So they're not pouring any new concrete to the stands?
No, they're gonna reuse the ones that are there.
I don't know. I mean, I typically have a problem with paying for the lights, but the labor seems ridiculous, so.
Both are around the same bid, so I don't know if there's anything that stands out. I don't know what all it entails, how much they gotta get in. I know copper's expensive, wiring's expensive. I don't know if you're gonna, will they give you an itemized bid on it? So that you can look at
They were all there at the same time we went over everything. And they are all, I mean, 800 bucks difference, I don't know. They were all saying roughly when I was listening to them, they were all saying four to five days to do the job. Anywhere from two to three people there to get it done. I'm not sure what a prevailing wage electrician is getting right now. I'm sure it's getting up close to be 90 to 95 bucks an hour.
Which is why they should have the labor digging the ditch instead of the electrician, so. But anyway.
Well, guys, I mean, like I said, I default to you all. What do you wanna do?
I'm fine with it is what it is. I don't have to like it. We run into that all the time, it costs more just purely because of prevailing wage. Can't really get a competitive bid.
Plus we're in a hurry. That doesn't help any.
That's right around what they were saying before, those 6,200 was what they said when we weren't in a hurry. So it doesn't seem like much has changed.
Are they hand digging it, Greg, or what?
Ah, they talked about hand digging. They also talked about bringing a trencher in. One company was afraid if they brought a trencher in, you know, how much they're gonna tear up of the yard. The other guy, I heard, talked to hand digging, take the sod off the top and then dig the trenches and put the sod back over. The other issue was the concrete that you and I talked about Friday. You know, how far, you know, if they can get conduit underneath the conduit, underneath the concrete, or if they're gonna have to cut it, and then we're gonna have patchwork, so.
I'm not gonna vote for it, so. I mean, I agree that we need to get it done, but I'm tired of getting screwed, so.
Okay. So what do we do?
I'd bid it.
Bid it?
Put it out for bid.
I'm fine with that, too. I don't know if it's gonna change much.
I mean, I just didn't like, I'd like to get the lights fixed. We have lights on the flag currently.
We have one light working at all right now, that's it.
And it's on the flag?
No, I'd have to go out there and break the bolts off and turn it.
The flag has to be lit or it has to be taken down at night. There's no other, there's no other two ways about it.
Can you get a light on the flag?
I'm gonna have to break the bolts, cut the bolts off and turn it.
I'd say let's get that done and let's bid this, so.
It's fine with me. I just, having a light on the flag is of absolute critical nature. Or the flag has to be taken down every day.
Right.
And raised every morning.
I don't know if the price is gonna come back any better or not.
They're not, probably, but we don't know that till we try. Then it's over the amount.
Yes.
So we would have to vote unanimously, we'd have to vote to declare an emergency because it's over the amount, which I would be prepared to do, but I'm not gonna do it if it's not unanimous.
You got it.
All right. Thanks for your work, Greg. Appreciate it. Sorry. No, it's okay. We got it up, we talked about it, we got a plan. Is there anything else to come before the commission before we start talking about budget discussions? Going once?
Anything, please.
Going twice. All right. We're gonna go into in-house budget discussion. And Michelle, you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like, you don't need to. We'll, somebody will come over and let you know when we're done so you can shut down the equipment. Absolutely. I'm happy to have them. Welcome, gentlemen. Get to sit through all that just to to do in-house budget. Lindsay, do you need one of us? All right. Excuse me.
I just wanna get this done.
Yep. My dad's one of the guys on the retirement group that comes back. He's been on the plan for thirty seven
I've known, John Losser
He's been working on that project
Who was the head of the nuclear plant. He and I went from kindergarten all the way through high school. He was Annapolis and submarine officer. I know a lot of the people work out there. We got really good people. In hindsight, it's just a shame we didn't build two.
Yeah.
You know, it just
I know why Brian didn't want to at the time because there was a lot of cost along.
Well, we want, they wanted to. It was the public that
Dad used, when he was down there building, he said there was a lot of stuff that just got buried.
I'll tell you what, that's good It was good for the central Missouri county. Those people, they were making good salaries. I mean, they spent it, they rented cheap apartments. They rented townhouses and they ate out at the better, I mean, it was, it really was good for a central Missouri county.
What's he, there were
We paid for it, but still it was
Ten minute presentation, my ass.
You gotta have specialists. You have people that know what they're doing to build those, too.
Well, it's funny, my dad retired two and a half years ago. He made it a whole year before he went back.
Oh, there's a lot of
He was there for a year. And I guess the week of Thanksgiving, he called me on, and he goes, I guess I'm retired again. They don't need me anymore. He made it a week and a half and they called back, like, if you can get him back in the first of the year.
There's a lot of those sub-veterans that work out there. Just kind of editor one. I've known more, I mean, these guys, they know what they're doing, too. Let's hope we don't have a new Madrid
Trying to gauge our mood today, or what?
Huh?
You trying to gauge our mood today, or what?
I'm just doing what Debbie told me to.
That's what everybody does, too.
Debbie's not happy, nobody's happy, so I'm trying to keep Debbie happy.
Kinda like your second wife, huh?
Can't get away from it.
I had told Ralph, where I, I said, you need to come up and kinda tell the commission what you have
Where we at, Kristen?
Plans, but he had some
Page 105.
Well, I'm sure Robin is not gonna work with him real good about
Is that where we're at?
Letting transition
No.
Wow.
Well, we're looking forward to working with Ralph. Larry's been hard to work with for months.
I think Ralph's gonna be fine to work with. I'm just, he's just not gonna have somebody to help him transition into it.
No.
Because even Pee-wee, whenever I came up for his spot, he even was real good about that and stuff. When we started doing these agendas, we needed to put, if we're gonna have staff here for some reason, put them at the top of the list so we can get them through and they can go back, do what they need to do. I'm not talking about Public Works being here for this, but like Greg said, for an hour and a half He wasn't on the agenda. But then we shouldn't even made him stay here. He shouldn't even been sitting there for an hour and a half. He hella could've had that light fixed and pointed towards the flag. You can see how much productive
I understand where you're coming from. I totally understand where you're coming from.
My preference is this, my preference is first get your guests and visitors and allow them the opportunity to present what they have. Obviously, we didn't have any really today, but if you have guests or visitors, you should always let them go first.
Sure.
And then staff. And then try to do the staff, you know, my opinion is do the staff in the order of what you get the most out of the room the quickest. You know?
Larry's gonna bring about 16 people.
Well, but I mean, in all honesty, if you've got, if you've got one, 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 and then five, you're better off getting the five folks out of the room with what their issues are.
So the sheriff's listening, so he's gonna bring more people next
He always brings at least three.
No, we want him last because then we got security in here.
With the exception of the sheriff, who always will go last from now on, there you go.
But I just, I think we need to, you know, make a cognizant effort to get them out of here because they got a lot of other stuff they can be doing.
Well, and generally
Watching sausage be made.
And generally, we do. And generally, we do get everybody out of here pretty quickly. The order of the agenda, you guys should, can move the agenda around. You don't have to do it in the order that it's historically always been done. And even on a day-to-day basis, you don't have to do it in the order that it's on the agenda, unless something has a time put on it.
Was that a Wrigley quote you used, watching sausage be made?
No, he always wanted to talk about cars and
Power windows.
Power windows, vinyl seats. And pig in a blanket. Oh, wait, that's not it. I always tried to mix up his analogies.
All right. So where are we starting at here? All right, I got parks up.
All right. I guess last time we were talking about the personnel and how we were trying to come up with putting people into this budget versus just reimbursing road and bridge for it. And so we were talking about part-time versus full-time. So Larry, maybe you could explain what you use up there for.
No, it stinks.
Oh, like bananas?
What we did is during the summer, from about probably March to October, there's pretty well a person out there full-time. I mean, between cutting grass, picking up trash, you know, with the three parks that we have currently, I guess four if you count OSH City. But I mean, there's, from about March to about October, maybe November, depending on the year. And what we just, when we were putting budget together is just kicking around, you know, the possibility of hiring somebody full-time to do that. Bring them in as Equipment Operator One, where they can take care of the maintenance during the summer. What we proposed, if it was possible, was from November through March, we would transfer that person pay-wise to Road and Bridge, where we could put them in a snowplow. And right now, we're using some of our grader operators as truck drivers during normal times. This will allow them maybe to get to their graders a little quicker. Larry, step in if there's anything, so.
I guess I'm gonna ask, can you, when you hire part-timers, can you say three of them will be used for parks only? Or would you not say that? Could you not say that?
Do what?
Part-timers, when you hire them in the summertime? Do you, do you believe that you use like three of them for nothing but parks? Or could you not say that?
We don't, normally, we haven't had real good luck with the summer help as far as being able to put them out there and they're high school kids to be able to do what they need to do. If we put summer help out there, we usually have to put somebody with them. You know, in the past, we used to use Jim Jaeger's. After he retired, he'd come back and work part-time for us. Now, Jim was a good person, but he decided he wanted to do that, so.
Okay, so you don't really use too much part-time now. And it's up to you guys what you wanna do, you know, we talked about that.
How did you come up with the 29,000, almost 30,000 you're requesting?
Well, that is using, Greg Bloxman out there doing it. And that's based off the last two years' time-wise.
Why do we have one of the highest ranking people in the department doing that?
Larry?
I mean, you said you were proposing maybe using Equipment Operator One, which would be, you know, to use Apple's, the lowest ranking person in the department.
Right.
Why are we using the highest ranking person? I mean, that's almost like having you guys go out there and take care of the park.
Well, the problem is, one, is if we take one of our Equipment Operator Ones out, that's taking away from Road and Bridge, to be honest with you. Greg
Can't, Greg, Greg doesn't do Road and Bridge?
He does, he
I mean, he's, any of the assistant road superintendent? I mean, that is kinda what the term says.
He's doing the parks and that. I mean, he does the park stuff, like helps with the other, like asphalt
What does he do at the parks?
Stuff like that.
What's he do?
He mows, he does the tree stuff.
Why are we having an upper-level management position mowing? Do you mow?
No.
You mow?
I have.
I mean, but I'd bet money that your job description doesn't say anything about mowing.
Well, I do a lot of things in my job.
Well, I know. I mean, I understand that if somebody, I understand if somebody says, hey, we gotta mow the lawn right now. It's an urgent matter, there's, you know, somehow it didn't get mowed. Somebody's gotta do it now. And you got all your crew out doing concrete project. I understand hopping, pulling a mower over there. We would do that.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, you know, we wouldn't say, well, it's Tuesday, I think I'm gonna go mow for the next three days. I mean, that's, there's a reason to have hierarchy. We went through this when we did all the budget adjustments. There's a hierarchy. And job duties follow, not individual people, but positions. So if you've got somebody who's in a position
But we don't have somebody to take out and put on it. That's the problem. We've got a full staff right now and they're all assigned to different crews.
When Jim left, Greg just kinda picked it up and that's kinda where we left. I mean, we actually, we know that we, you know, that he's too high paid to be out there. But we don't have somebody else that we can just put there all year long.
We don't have someone sitting around that we could just pull off that are assigned to do different jobs. That's what we keep, we're trying to keep from disrupting Road and Bridge as much as we possibly can with the parks.
I mean, for $30,000 a year, you could just hire somebody.
Well, that's what
And if Greg, and if Greg, I mean, since you're, since obviously you don't need him full-time because he's doing half the time working on the parks, you could eliminate that position, put in a new Equipment Operator One, and you'd come out with a net savings, the bottom line.
We would like to have somebody in that position and then Greg is on our park, he does the park committee stuff. We, we would like to have somebody in that position, and then, Greg is on our park, he does the park committee stuff, too, with, with the, you know, when he goes out, he actually, when somebody rents it, he's the one that goes out and checks it out, cleans it back up if something's not the way it's supposed to be. So he's kind of doing those duties, too. If we had somebody full-time that we could put in that position, I mean, that's what we're actually adding.
So you're wanting an extra person?
Or we can do, you know-
Well, we're just wanting a person.
Debbie said we can do part-time people and just have Greg check on them every once in a while, that's another option. Probably not the best option, but it would, that's something we can do.
It's, however, we try to keep parks up running as, as good as we can without disrupting Road and Bridge. You know, that's an issue we've, we fought for forever, you know, it, it's, parks have never been funded as its own separate entity. It's always been subsidized by, uh, Road and Bridge.
We've just tried to do the best we can for the job.
So, uh, the, uh, under parks here, when I look at vehicle and equipment operation, there's only a thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. So, does Greg drive a truck out there?
Yeah, that's, that's been that a way, again, uh-
Even when Jim Jaeger's was there, he used one of our vehicles.
Right.
I mean, when he went from the county park back to our place, or down, he used to do juvenile, you know, all that.
So, I mean, I assume, I know we have a mower out there that we keep at the fire station, but doesn't he have to load that mower up and go mow-
Right.
Brooks and thaning and stuff?
Right.
And so-
I'd say that's basically for gas, that's where that's been.
Yeah, basically, the gas and oil for the-
So the, the vehicle's out of Road and Bridge, I guess, and-
Yeah.
Trailer and all that stuff?
Yeah, the trailer and everything is all equipment that we have currently on, you know, that we're using there.
The equipment that's actually on, that, there's one, zero-turn mower that the commission actually bought through the sales tax. The other two mowers, uh, there's a tractor there, it's got a carry-all thing on it, that's actually ours. And then there's a, another, uh, John Deere mower, a belly mower under, that's actually ours.
Excuse me?
So, I mean, just when I look at it, you know, as far as parks goes, you're not really recouping the cost that you've got associated with that, because you've, you've got a, a truck that he's running out there all the time, you got wear and tear on that, you got equipment that you're going to have to replace at some point, and, uh, you know, and a lot of other things that are going on there as well, so, um, and of course, you're not showing that in there, and so, I mean, I, I think we should be able to have a lower-paid guy either cutting the grass or, or, uh, or depending on what those, those other associated costs come into play there, you know, it's, I know you've looked at it at some point of trying to subcontract that out, but, you know, you'd still have to have somebody that'd probably drive by and, and check it out once in a while, but, uh, so I, I just don't know where those, where those costs are, but, uh,
And I know that's what Kristen was trying to do, is get more of it in there, just kind of like we do with planning this year, and we've got the people actually in there, so that's what we're trying, we're trying to do with parks, so we can really give you a true picture of what parks is costing us, you know, and the idea of ever taking over any more property.
You know, as far as Road and Bridge, the tractor, little loader out there and, uh, well, the belly, the John Deere with the belly mower, that's probably something we could use or keep there at our shop, or cut our own grass right there. You know, as far as the other loader and tractor out there, that's, you know, it's something we wouldn't need down the road. But, you know, we purchased it in the past to, again, subsidize the park system.
I mean, overall, I think, you know, County Park is, of course, the biggest expense that we got, because it's the biggest park, but, uh, you know, I, I think Legion does a great job, and of course, Donnie Rourke does a great job out there, but, you know, it seemed to me like the agreement out there was that they, they had a bigger chunk of it, and, uh, but we're still maintaining a lot of that, um, so-
I think they only maintain the park that they have the lease on, which is where the ball, the ball fields, parking lot and the driveway.
Yeah, probably the only thing we mow for them that they might not have a lease on is that field to the right if you come in.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where that line is.
Well, when I, when I looked at the lease, it was pretty much everything that was south of the lake. I mean, it was that big field, it was, it was all that, because they had a bigger plan to, to put a football field or something in there at one time, and so, um, I mean, they maintain the ball fields and that's about it. So, I mean, I'm not-
And it was leased encompassed that much more?
That's a pretty good-sized area, but, anyway, I don't really have a problem maintaining it, but, uh-
Particularly considering just around the bar.
Right.
Well, some, I know Larry, I've been bringing up for years in the past, is how we've, you know, planning's finally gotten separated. We subsidize a lot of that, we were buying the vehicles out of Public Works and, and they were using it.
Parks should definitely be segregated, I don't think there's any question of that.
And I guess that we need a plan from you guys on personnel, if we don't agree with-
My suggestion would be throw parks, planning, what's the other one? Is there another one? Those two into their own little department.
You do.
And let, and let Shannon be kind of the head of it. And hire a full-time park worker slash planning guy.
So, ringing out to two different departments?
Yeah, but I mean, just for our organizational chart, have, that way you got a manager over it that's not Public Works, it's a GR manager as opposed to Public Works manager.
But we're adding that FT for-
And then pull one out of Public Works.
Okay. Okay, I heard that one's fine.
It makes you guys whole, and it makes parks whole.
I guess I missed that. We're going to add one FT.
And pull one out of Public Works.
So we're effective.
It makes everything whole.
I don't think they see it that way.
Well, it said they need thirty thousand dollars to do parks for employee reimbursement.
Right, but I think thirty-
If we take thirty thousand dollars, put it as a new employee in parks, and take thirty thousand dollars out of Public Works, it solves the problem. That's what I heard!
That was a little-
But this person I can see does cross over, it does cross over in the wintertime to help them plow.
If that's what you have this person do, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and on the days when it's raining, they can't mow grass, things like that, what, what's their job? What? That's why I originally asked for part-time.
Yeah, I just envisioned it being part-time, and then maybe one of their main guys is watching things go on or whatever.
And I'm okay with that, too.
Well, and if you still wanted Shannon as general revenue, to be the one-
He's within-
I just thought that way you don't worry about, you know, the, the problem with Public Works is, it, it's not technically Public Works, it's technically Road and Bridge.
Right.
And parks is not Road and Bridge, and planning is not Road and Bridge.
Right.
And even if you guys spend time just overseeing it, probably need to be billing that time back to general revenue. Well, Shannon is no longer in the Road and Bridge budget, he's in general revenue. So it would just make sense to have him be responsible for, it's one extra person slash duty, I don't know if-
There's some zoning on the way, I don't know how that works for him, I don't know.
I don't either.
Do inspections and stuff go under planning?
Inspection should be under planning, right?
Basically, there's actually four people in that department, it's the two building inspectors, Shannon is a senior planner, and then Brenda Peters is administrative help.
Yeah. I'm not sure where that tab's at.
What do you guys come up with a plan for?
Yeah, I'm not sure, we, basically, that's what we submitted as budget, was, you know, uh, you know, you could pretty well put a part-time person, twenty-nine thousand would cover pretty well the March through November, i- if you so choose.
Yeah, if you do it full-time, that would pay for that.
Yeah, we could, we could pick up the November through March, uh, out of Road and Bridge, you know, it's, I'm not sure what you're looking for, so that's what we tried doing this time, you know, we met with Kristen early on when she said she liked to separate this out, and that's what we've tried doing is-
Should we get Shannon up here? Let's talk to him about it. I don't know.
That's kind of why we got to a standstill, it's like we're-
I think we're right back, I think we're right back to where we started.
What direction do we want to go, I don't-
Gentlemen?
I don't care that we really restructure this, I mean, I, I mean, I, I see a lot of downtime regardless of who does it. I mean, you know, if it rains all week, what are they going to do all week? You know, I mean, they go pick up the trash, I guess, but, um, so, I'm sure you find that, but, you know, your road crews and stuff, too, you know, there's just only so much you can fix in the shop when it's raining, so, um, I mean, I just think, uh, I mean, I would agree with Mark that-
Something else-
That assistant road superintendent is probably overqualified to be out there cutting grass.
What if you put this person under maintenance, like, on the days when they're not mowing grass, they're working good maintenance part?
I don't have an objection to that.
Shortened it at the moment, I mean, if that's something-
I don't have an objection to that idea, either.
They've got a truck, got a trailer.
And they know how to mow.
They have, they have a trailer and a truck already.
That's what I mean, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. That might be a good option, I kind of like that.
I mean, and then the, the mowers are already out there that they could-
Yeah.
So-
Well, they could bring her-
How big is Brooks Park? Very big?
No, it's a pocket.
But how much do you mow?
Most of it, since we did the work and, and got rid of the thing, it's probably an acre.
Yeah.
So not too much.
Less than an hour mowing on those zero-turn radius ones.
Any interest in looking at outdoors in the morning?
I thought you all looked at that before.
It came in expensive, what we-
I was going to say, I think it's going to come in probably more. No, there's not.
I think Kristen makes a valid point, I think, maybe we could bring it back under maintenance, and then that would, I mean, then we could kind of re, maybe restructure maintenance.
Well, that would give them the ability to have some filling if they have people that are not here.
And then, maybe not necessarily take, you know, a person out of your budget, but just-
I was just teasing you on that. Does it take a-
It's how, they have the funds watching him when he says it, it's like, it's like, where'd that come from? Wait a second here.
I couldn't expect it, that should be honest.
So March to October, you're basically saying it takes a full-time person to do grass and maintenance at the parks.
Yeah.
So that, you give him somebody, like, the rainy days or whatever.
And, and during the wintertime.
Or he can take two people, cut the grass, have it done in half a day, and then be able to fill in if-
It might actually be a benefit to him.
About every other day, you got to dump trash, I mean, it's like, Thane and they burnt the trash can over there, uh, week before last, I think, actually, or one of, I mean, you got to check them all.
We just need to put some cameras out.
Every day, or?
Well, trash you got to dump about every other-
Go into ours, get some of them deer cams and set them up. Find them a little, it'd be cheaper than buying a barrel every time.
Well, but-
Could those steal the deer camp? They're just- Pretty small now, I don't-
That's the one, that's the one thing the deer can't do.
The, uh, we do have some vandalism out at, at County Park, but it's mainly the vandalism is around Westy Hogs.
Unfortunately.
At Thane.
We get, yeah, we get our thing, we get a, we get some creative, uh, artists out at County Park on the bathrooms once in a while, but they'll come out and spray paint their gang.
How much has to be done in O-SH City?
Just cutting, cutting grass.
Every couple weeks, or knocking the weeds down?
Well, during the summer, when it's, when it, when the grass is growing, the spring, usually spring and fall's when the, you know, if we have a hot, hot summer, you know, like you know, the grass slows down, but, uh-
Do we have a part in O-SH City? Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no property tag on it. It's real estate, you can't stick a property tag on it. Wash this away, when the river comes up, the property- When the, when the river comes up, the property tags wash away.
We had that property we went to-
Debbie and Kristen are freaking out, what property in O-SH City?
We have a piece, we have a piece down by the river, right? Now, we have the other piece, too, yet? Did we talk about getting?
Yeah, we haven't.
Will you, before you guys leave, will you talk to our events about that?
I don't know.
I thought we did, but I don't remember.
We mowed the, we mowed it.
I thought we got it.
Okay, well, maybe we-
That other vacant lot, right? That other vacant lot.
Tell me, Jill, if there's no ticket for what, what it is?
I knew we got the one down at Lake Carmel, or, Mount Carmel, um, that piece of property down there.
I just need to add the land, I need to-
You're talking about the property by, uh, near, uh-
Redfield.
Yeah, yeah, that we acquired.
Yeah. I didn't know we'd gotten the one down there.
The property in O-SH City is basically, uh, parking lot and a boat ramp.
Well, the-
No, the, well, there is that piece, and then there's another piece-
Right.
They're heading to it.
There's a lot there. We need to do a lot that way.
Right.
I don't know, uh, well, I haven't checked that, I don't know if we-
Don't those, don't those connect? No? So do we have that labeled for people to park their trucks and boat trailers after they launch, or?
That part is marked as county, but the other lot is-
We acquired, we acquired a piece through-
A sale, a property sale?
Yeah, well, it's liquid taxes.
Yeah.
Liquid taxes, we acquired a piece down there close to the other piece, and so-
So, block, half-blockway.
That came up same time as Mount Carmel, and I knew we'd got Mount Carmel, but I didn't know, realize we'd gotten that one down there.
Jill's checking on it.
Okay.
But we did, we've always had one park down there.
Yeah.
We actually had some, we didn't end up with litigation, but we all, where did we end up with litigation?
We were in litigation, we agreed.
Because it was the other, the rest, there was no, nobody for sure knew where the property lines were down there.
He'd been maintaining it for so long.
I think it makes a lot of sense to put that under maintenance.
I agree, I think that's an excellent idea. Good job, Kristen.
Yeah.
You know what? Maybe we'll paint your office for you.
What about her chairs?
I don't know, that's all, that's all of a lot to ask there, Sam.
I don't know, yeah.
I'll tell you what, I'll throw in some, I'll throw in some carpeting, how about that?
They were, they were four-hundred-dollar chairs.
We can get her some oceans each.
I'm just going to come down and steal chairs out of your-
Perfect! Hey, take all you want.
You can have, you can have four of those, no problem.
Get, get six of them out of surplus.
I'll hurry down some lovely greens.
Steal mine out of my office.
Yeah, Jeff said you can have his, Jeff needs a new chair.
Can't tell which one this is.
That's O-SH City.
And we did take it?
Yeah.
Because it's not signed.
Well, Larry, that's Larry's file, he gave it to me, and I just talked to him, and he said we did get it.
Okay.
That may be recorded down in-
Were you checking? It's not along the river.
It's this one right here. River's right there, it's that one right there, yeah.
Yeah, it's across the river, whatever you want to call it, across the road.
The river's right there.
Okay, so we on this one?
We on that, we on this one, I think, and this one. That's where the ramp is. Alright.
There's a ramp there? An old ramp.
Yeah, gravel ramp.
I think the ramp's right there.
By the bridge? Railroad tracks?
Yeah.
Where we were talking about putting one in someday, maybe?
Tower at, where's the leaning tower?
Leaning tower, no, leaning towers on the other side of railroad track.
It's on the other side of the-
Although I think it's gone now, did they tear it down?
I think they did, yeah.
They destroyed the leaning tower of O-SH City.
Yeah, I wonder if they put the railroad tracks, another track in.
Yeah, or deed stamp, a stamp, just so we know. And then will you get a copy to that of Kristen? Because I thought we, I mean, we paid the, we paid for it.
Can I get the one on Mount Carmel?
Here you go.
Jim didn't give you that stuff? Jim!
Well, you get, just get the recorder, a copy of the recorded ones. You can probably do it, can you print those off of Minmo G.I.S., off of our access to it? You can print the deed?
Yeah.
So he could just get on the, on Minmo G.I.S. and just print off?
So if we put, uh, parks under maintenance, I mean, is that going to, I mean, and Greg gets to come back under Road and Bridge, and, I mean, you guys good, or?
I think you can do more.
I mean, you mean, that, you got another half a-
Do you remember how you get into our side of it?
Just go into the, I just go into the Cole County website and then hit G.I.S.
Oh, I just go to Minmo G.I.S.
Okay, um, I'll go through our website. So that you have more access to it.
Yeah, there's some property out there.
Oh, that's okay.
That used to be the old war farm. Part of it.
Do you use it for stockpile or something?
No.
You guys cleared that lot at Mount Carmel yet?
We're working on it, but we haven't got it completed. There's still brush files to be burned.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's, here's that site, Chris. Let's see where it ran here. So leaning tires right, was right there. I don't think it's there anymore. We own this parcel right here. Doesn't even really show it as a parcel. This is the parcel that we just got right here. We own that parcel right there, right? Remember where the boat ramp is?
Right, that's what.
And that's the parcel we own. I'm not sure how you.
Is that all cleared or anything, or Larry?
I don't know.
How do we find the deed on that?
Over there and hit the, uh. If you hit on the property, you should be able to scroll down and get collector's info and it might have the deed on there. Click on that.
Click on what? I? That one?
No, this one. Next one, there you go. Click on that and then click on the problem.
There you go. No, it still shows.
Unless G I S hasn't updated it.
View deed scans.
What's the address? Railroad, East Railroad?
Why is it not letting me?
One oh six.
Trying to do deed scans. There we go.
Where?
Oh, oh, that's, I forgot. We haven't heard about that one for a while.
What's that damn?
Okay.
Fitting, fitting.
That?
That one I have. And this is Mount Carmel. And then we get it out. Well, nobody wants it, so I guess that's why we ended up.
I don't even know how to.
Where, where are we?
All right, um. We need to get, find out that deed was actually done or not, cause it's not showing.
Jill?
It didn't show up as. Was it that lot?
Why is it so friggin' hot in here?
I thought it was just me. I was like.
No, it's hotter than I think, than about seventy. A while ago it was way up and it's still hot in here.
And it's still running.
Is this the property?
I keep our store at sixty-five.
I'd rather.
Is that the one right there? Our store at sixty-five.
That's okay.
That comes up right there.
My bill is light for all so much too.
It's not in our name.
Yeah, our utilities.
I think the paperwork is still being done with that one. Possibly then.
It might have had a weight in the year, I don't know.
So we're, so we're, you're gonna get us a list, we're gonna work, we're gonna figure out parks, I'm just gonna put, we're gonna figure that out in maintenance, right? I don't like that another person. I don't like that another person.
How do you wanna do the park committee?
I think the park committee doesn't necessarily have to change. I mean, just.
I think Larry was wanting you to say it needs to change. Take it to, please.
Um, I mean, we, I think we can take a look at that and see.
I mean, I don't care. I'm just asking. We're gonna keep this void real hard, then.
I'd say for now, and if we can take a look at changing it or whatnot, um.
Now, as far as equipment, do we wanna transfer, you know, like I said, if maintenance is gonna take over, we'd like to keep probably at least that belly mower. That's one they use most of them.
Or are they gonna mow more law?
I don't know.
Who's gonna break this to Greg?
Does that person gonna mow more grass?
I mean, they're mowing everything else. I don't know why not.
Yeah, we just transfer them all more.
I mean, ideally, we just have, you know, something that they could come out there and use, so they don't have to haul a piece of equipment around, but.
Well, if they do that, they would have that, that tractor then with the, uh, we would not bring a skid steerper then. They could use that little tractor to lower.
Oh, we'll figure out.
Eric ever signed it. So he's printing out a new one and he's signing it.
Signing, getting filed and.
Yeah.
And bringing up. Perfect.
So we do have another piece of property. Now, the one piece that we own down there, did you see where it's at, Kristen? Come here, I'll show you real quick. I don't even know the. So we own this little piece right here. But it's not a parcel.
Okay.
I don't know how you describe it. It's not meets and bounds described as a parcel. We basically own everything between the river and Osage Water Street from wherever that other property line is.
Basically from the railroad up to that.
Are those, are those parcels at all?
Yeah, there's actually a parcel there. There it is. So somebody owns that parcel, right there. We don't own that.
Railroad to the what? Railroad to the what?
To the Joe Weberg property.
So that's the Weberg property right there. And then we own basically everything from it to the railroad. It was dedicated as public land when they let plat out, when they platted out Osage City. So, I don't even know if we actually have a deed to it anywhere.
There's, we, we can tell, I'm talking to some of the old timers down there, that I think there's actually a railroad spur went up to the cannery. It used to be a cannery just to, uh, upriver from there. And I think that's where Hee Wee and.
We probably oughta have Jill get in there and clear up that title on that piece there. We do a quiet, quiet title lawsuit on that?
Yeah, there was, there was a, it went to court between Weberg and, and we claimed it and then they'd filed under however.
Quiet title or adverse possession or one of those things, yeah.
Something like that. I think Jamie was still here when that.
I think we settled it.
Yeah, we ended up splitting where that line's at. I think Joe followed up and actually had it shown us. Yeah.
We may have to do the same.
I think I have something for that.
Debbie, as far as if we do, if we go forward with this, I mean, with the utilities and everything, um, transfer to Greg?
Not, well.
As far as payment?
I, I think we should move parks to maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Chris?
I agree.
Jeff?
That's gonna require F T E and maintenance, so.
So.
Cause all they're doing is cutting grass. It's not like he's.
What do we need to do to move that around so that?
So the question there is, do you want to keep it separate so you can see what parks are costing?
Yes.
So, so let's keep the department separate.
Right, but, but we'll put it under Greg.
So he would supervise.
And the employee will be a employee that he and Parks would share. Cause I don't think it's a, it's a full-time employee, but it's for four months a year, there's not much for him to do.
So do you want to put that full-time employee in maintenance?
Yes.
Or in Parks?
I'd put the full-time employee in Parks.
So if it ever turned into more of a full-time?
Cause he's gonna be doing Parks for the majority of his job.
He's gonna do the rentals.
And all the collecting the money and everything else.
How often we do that?
Last summer, or the last year, probably.
We just implemented a decision.
So, not that ba, not that heavy a lifting, is it?
The way I see it is, I see it, I see it as a maintenance worker that just takes care of the parks. I mean, I don't know how you allot his time, but part of his time. Huh?
And just keep everything else the way it is?
That's what I would do.
So you'd have all of the costs except for the person in Parks?
Yes, and there'd be an main, employee reimbursement.
Allocate his time, cause I mean, you know, even in the, in the middle of April or May, when mowing's great guns, if it rains all week, he's gonna be in the buildings painting or.
And it's all G R.
So what we're doing with rentals is do like we're doing with U B and Water.
You won't do anything with rentals. Greg will be responsible for rentals. If, um, if we, if the maintenance guy is under, is in charge of the parks, he should be in charge of rentals, so he knows who's renting it. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, let's see, we have electric trash and water and sewer.
He has no way to, he has no way to collect, um.
So he's gonna take your money and all that.
The money can't go into. Debbie out of Sheppers.
Well.
Can do, Debbie out of Sheppers can do it. She needs something to do anyway. She'll take care of the, that part of it, the booking and stuff, and then you have your.
I mean, really, with the rental, you're gonna take the money to, uh, the treasurer to be deposited?
It's five or six times a year.
So it's mainly a paper shuffle.
Really, all he needs is a calendar, so that he knows he doesn't rent, bark the same people, two people for people the same day.
But there's a contract and a deposit.
The contract, you guys have electronically, right?
Get reimbursed for the deposit.
Yeah.
But I think right now, are you guys committing that reimbursement immediately, Greg? Somebody's gotta hold the check.
I hate, I hate to put more on Greg. I mean, yeah, can we add an F T E and they can help with mowing? I mean, I.
That's why I said put it out there on Debbie at Sheppers. She can take care of the rentals and stuff and paper trail.
People aren't gonna really be too familiar with that to go in there, but I mean, I guess they.
They'll figure out where it's at if they wanna rent a place.
Okay.
I don't know. I agree. I don't wanna put more on Greg on, as far as that goes.
Well, that are British planning, I mean.
Yeah, but then you got it under two departments.
Jerry doesn't know?
I think you could just do it like you do U B and Water, do a build-up contract to park.
I think while we try to figure this out, we keep everything the same as much as possible, other than moving mowing and the maintenance over to maintenance. I mean, let's, I mean, let's not take a huge step and try to overwhelm somebody with all kinds of new stuff. Larry and, and is familiar with all the rental stuff and Greg hasn't been sitting in on that and I don't think Greg has time to really be sitting in on Parks meetings and stuff like that too, even though he'll need to. Um, which is what, once a month, once a quarter?
Once a quarter.
Let's, let's take little steps and try to transition that, just keep, my opinion. Keep the payments and everything through us and as far.
For the time being, until we get this report done, people are gonna naturally come to you guys anyways, since it's been, since the beginning.
I'm totally opposite. I think if we're gonna do it, you do it wholesale, um, and it's gonna land in Greg's lap and he's not gonna probably like it very much at first, but that's really where it belongs, under maintenance.
So is he gonna be responsible for cutting grass at all these Osage, uh, Elston and St. Osage?
Yeah, but that's what the other, basically you're gonna give them another F T E to take care of that. That's gonna be their specific chore.
I mean, I, we're getting pretty far into the weeds of the details. I think we've got the general concept, don't you, Jen?
Mm-hmm.
For renting it out six, six days a year and figuring out how to do one, six deposit checks, it's not that hard.
Well, I'm talking to Ray this morning. He said he worked probably seventy hours last week.
I did too.
I did too, but I mean, I don't know. Well, that's six, don't give it this.
It was the first year.
Couple of months we did implement it. I mean, it's gonna be more.
Well, I know, but I mean, it's, it's still a mo, a relatively modest amount. It's not like, it's not like Jeff's City Parks and Rec where they've got seventeen or eighteen or twenty-five facilities and inside those facilities, some of them have fourteen or eighteen sub-facilities and they're always being rented out. I mean, and they, they rent their individual ball fields for what, two-hour increments or one-hour increments?
Mm, yeah.
Something like that. So I mean, you could have, just at Bender, you got five ball fields, you could have a hundred and seventy people renting it over a weekend.
All right, you guys have any questions for them over planning or anything else?
All right, so all right.
Where's planning?
All right, I'm good.
What did we just decide to do then?
Put a maintenance worker and have maintenance in charge of Parks and Rec.
So who's doing the rentals?
Isn't that the weeds?
Is that staying out there?
That's the weeds.
Or that's staying?
Your way down the weeds.
Well, when are we gonna decide that?
Well, they should all get together and work out a transition plan.
As long as it's after January first, cause if. Okay, I'd rather not.
Know what needs to be done, so if you've got a form for a rental contract, why would we worry about that? You would need to talk to.
If we're throwing that in Greg's lap, or who are we gonna do that with? I'm fine with getting into weeds on this some other time. I'd rather do budget stuff today.
You know, so my, my two cents is, we can stay in the weeds all day today.
That's what I'm saying.
And if you'd like, tomorrow, we can jump back in the weeds too and do that all day, because that's my last ones. You guys might have to come back and deal with bigger issues, but that's fine with me. More weeds?
That's what I was saying. We can get in the weeds some other time.
All right.
I don't even know where planning is.
We've moved on, but we never settled anything.
Where's planning at? Where's planning at?
Planning is one seventy-three. It should be, I don't know what.
Let's do planning. Let's do Road and Bridge while we got them here.
We kinda talked about planning last week. I don't think we had.
One seventy-three.
I don't have one seventy-three. I only go to a hundred and forty-five.
Back in general, we're way past that. Sixty-two. Okay, we don't need to go back there.
Yeah, I was gonna say that we didn't have any concern.
All right. No changes to planning? Don't have to worry about planning, I guess.
I did have to update their insurance costs.
So where's Public Works at then?
One oh eight.
Now that I had to shut all those pages to find planning. All right, one oh eight, Road and Bridge.
Um, let's see, what did they ask? We had some salary issues and then we talked about fuel.
Your budget officer request, that includes a pay raise, right? I mean, that's how your number is.
It did not include the raises though that were done in November, but yeah.
But I mean, it's like a two percent raise or?
Yeah, it included the same raise. Yeah, they talked about fuel, that you may be able to cut it back to two ninety-one, I mean, five ninety-one. Excuse me.
Two ninety-one? That balances the budget.
Yeah, no problem there. So, so back to July. Talked about leaving it to things.
What's gas down to now?
I haven't checked it, um.
Three, two twenty-five, two fifteen.
It was two nineteen, I think a beeline down in Patch Flat, so.
Two nineteen. What's diesel at? Three fifty?
Uh, it's coming down at three thirty-one, I think, last, cause it, down at Eldon.
Isn't that crazy?
But it's funny, when the other one goes up, it kinda like leveling out, so.
So did you guys have anything in Road and Bridge?
The only thing we talked to you about the day of the budget was the possibility of taking the maintenance worker once to equipment operator once. That's what we proposed when we were doing the raises.
And that was it, other than the fuel.
Yeah.
Where's that at?
And you see, we already talked about sales tax and the capital, but they have planned it there.
Yeah, we already went through that, huh?
Yep. All right. Got anything else for these guys? We think salt prices are gonna go down next year?
Hopefully, yes. Depends on the winter we have this year.
It's supposed to snow Thursday.
I know.
Larry Bishop said that snow wasn't coming till March, what, thirty-first?
What's our next, what's next? Assessors? You got anything in there?
That's why I said it.
He wants a residential appraiser, cause our, that's open right now. He wants to add a commercial appraiser and a field appraiser.
We're going.
Sorry.
Oh, well, we forgot to talk about animal control. We had agreed you were gonna.
Since you got rid of parks.
Yeah, you know. Hey, we'll give you an F T E with it.
So Chris only has one open spot?
Well, they, they didn't gain an F T E. They already had them. They're just gonna have a person allocate the fund.
So Chris has one open spot?
I thought that he finally filled, filled. No, he has one residential appraiser that's open.
And then he, that's what he said when he met with us. He may have filled it since then, but I think he's wanting to add, add two positions is what he's wanting to add. Right now, the field appraiser's got a contract with somebody, but he said they're
I'm.
gonna retire, or he doesn't know what's going on with that.
He confuses me when he submits his request. You have that one email about personnel? Out there, you know, Mark, you couldn't find it under the, what we got from him is.
Excuse me.
Out there, you know, Mark, you couldn't find it under the, what we got from him is out there, as far as the auditor, uh, the assessor's request. Um, it's not really very clear, but I don't know which email you wanna see.
What are we doing here? Assessor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's talking about salaries, and it doesn't make any sense, 'cause it increased with the addition of two assessment clerk ones. He didn't add two assessment clerk ones. He had two open at one time, and one general certified appraiser position. I'm not sure if that was in there or not. I don't think that it was.
I think that was the new one he wanted, was the general certified appraiser, if I remember right. I'm trying to find the email you're looking at.
Residential.
But he doesn't say that, I don't know. He doesn't say that there, but he did say it. I don't, I get confused when he talks about salary line.
So it says he's al- he's has allowed thirteen thousand dollars for raises, when his employees were given substantial raises in fourteen, right? It's the one where we sent him the letter and said, you know.
Well, he actually had a residential appraiser and a clerk. He decided to hire two clerks, and the difference in the money, he passed down, so.
Right, he divvied up.
Yes.
So what I've got is, he's got one open position, a residential appraiser.
Yes.
Plus, he wants to hire one field appraiser, plus he wants to hire one commercial appraiser. That's, that's my notes from.
That's what I have, too, but I'm not sure what, the general certified appraiser, is that a commercial appraiser in his email?
Yeah, well.
I, I don't, I don't know what the difference between a field appraiser, a commercial appraiser, and a general certified appraiser is. I don't.
We changed names of them, so.
I thought a general certified was his commercial, because he doesn't currently have anyone doing commercial.
He has a contract with, I mean, he has a, a gentleman that used to work in the assessor's office many, many years ago, and I'm assuming that he thinks that's gonna go away, that he's gonna re- retire, so I don't know that for a fact. But then we're.
That's the field appraiser that we've got, that we've contracted out. He was looking at actually filling that position. So do we, we know what we spend on the field appraiser? Would it be smarter to hire somebody, or is it still smarter to contract it out?
At the moment, that, I think it was in real estate maintenance.
Why did you off, why did you request nothing for him? Are we not funding the assessor? The column says twenty fifteen budget officer requested on the spreadsheet, all zeros.
That's his submission to me, what you're looking at?
No, I got an Excel spreadsheet that was updated December ninth.
I think she opened it December ninth, 'cause I just sent it to her. That was his request. This is my, in the book.
Okay, so he wants four thousand dollars more. Oh, no, that's taxes, sorry. On the road you said. So he wants.
Department budget, he's.
Four hundred and seventy-three thousand, and last year's budget was four twenty, so he wants fifty-three thousand dollars more. What is the balance in this fund?
It's carried forward, we're, we're definitely right at a million.
What was it last year?
A million eight.
One point eight? One million eight thousand?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, so we're basically operating that as an in-and-out fund, right?
It, it, I mean, it.
His revenues, but he, there's no structural issues to it. It's just a revenue in, revenue out.
Right.
This will change that.
Yes.
If we take his proposal.
Yes.
Except for the budget shows he wouldn't be the other way around. I can't understand this budget.
So if you look, the cash forward currently is the same as his contingency, that means he's balanced otherwise with his.
Can you put this up on the screen, so I can understand what tech's going on here? 'Cause I'm totally confused, Kristen.
Are you looking at his spreadsheet or my?
Well, I'm trying to make heads or tails out of one or the other.
Okay, so if you look at the book, if you look at the cash forward amount and the contingency, they're the same, which means he is perfectly balanced between his basic revenue and expense, because he took those.
Cash forward.
He would still be the same.
Okay, on your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So any adjustment.
On his budget, he would be down by fifteen, by sixty-eight, seventy-eight thousand dollars. Is that right?
Well, it shows seven with what he submitted.
Oh, wait a second. He says a million.
Yeah, a million, seven thousand.
But he did not have his programming costs or his computer.
Well, and he has a mil- he only had a million cash forward instead of a million eighty-five cash forward. So his proposed, that's the problem with this contingency expense. You start looking at stuff and it doesn't match up. So his proposed expenditures were one point eight four four, and your proposed expenditures are one point eight nine. Oh, she just left. Oh, I've had it. It's just killing me.
Oh, um, I'll be up in a minute.
Well, her. Her, she's just matching up her revenue and her expenses.
I know, I'm trying to figure this out. So his proposed expenses are a total of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-four. And she proposes that his income will be one eight nine three, six four three, minus one oh eight five, nine oh nine, equals eight hundred and seven thousand. Seven three four. So it's a thirty thousand dollar structural deficit, is what he's proposing. There. That's what I was trying to figure out. He's proposing a thirty thousand dollar structural deficit.
I mean, that million that he's setting on, obviously, he can use, but we had envisioned using that for capital.
You can't use it unless we say you can use it.
Um, more of capital than for ongoing expenses there. Yeah. Contract worker that we currently have, he's making ten to eleven thousand. So even if we got rid of that and hired a person, we're still weighing the whole with benefits.
Yeah.
Right.
She's up there.
Or we could take that programming and put it over there.
At what point of the year, or if the gentleman even knows that one's leaving, or if it's just something that Chris has said, I don't know anything for that.
Who's leaving?
I don't know. Um, Gene Kerwin is the one that currently does it, as a contract worker.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Larry says that taxes haven't been paid on yet, so.
Yeah, we're supposed to waive it.
You were going to pay the base taxes to go to the schools. You all agreed.
Oh, that's right. I do remember that. Okay.
So it's a whopping sum of one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, fifty-one cents. You also need to abate penalties.
All right, we'll get Jeff in here and vote that real quick. Let's get Michelle over here. That'll take all two seconds.
Wait, put that on the agenda before we do that?
No, we don't have to.
Okay, can we get this contract signed?
What is it?
For pest control. Do you care if it's an original signature?
All right, okay. We can do this, too, 'cause we voted the bit.
I mean, just, maybe an original signature on that, since it'll start on February one.
We gotta do two quick votes. One is the pest control contract, that we vote, awarded the bid on, and then the other is the property out in Osage City. We have to approve paying a hundred and what?
One eighty-nine fifty-one.
And taxes on it, and abating the rest, which is owed us.
So we're gonna pay ourselves?
No, we, no, they, that goes to schools. The rest, everything else that's on the bill goes to us, 'cause we had to clean the property and do that stuff with it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the pest control.
All right. I have a motion to approve the contract with Mike's Pest Control.
Second.
And a second. Call roll, please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
You're gonna make Chris feel bad.
Roll call vote, that's approved. Here's that. And then, second of all, I need a motion to approve paying, how much?
One eighty-nine fifty-one.
One eighty-nine fifty-one to the county collector, and abating all other taxes, liens, et cetera.
Penalties.
Penalties, et cetera, on the parcel located at. I'm looking for the description. Per the attached deed. How about that?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, call roll, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
By roll call vote, that motion's approved. There, that solves that problem. We're innovative and flexible up here, so. That's the attached deed. Don't lose that. That's the original. It's done. We just said by the attached deed, and we just make sure the deed gets attached.
Okay, I have an address.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't care.
Okay, where were we at?
Well.
Oh, we're talking about the assessor still. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome. I'll tell Larry. Where is the deed?
She's got the deed.
Hasn't been recorded yet.
She needs a copy to go in the file.
Right, but don't you want it after it's been recorded?
Thank you.
Okay, the only other thing he talked about, I guess, was incre- I'm gonna increase his professional services by that lawsuit, you know, that's going on yet with Ameren, on both sides, the assessor, that is.
Okay.
And, um, the transfer, I'm gonna keep the same for computer services until we get our new indoor cost study done. It's been there for two years now. Other than personnel, and I don't know if you wanna dress personnel all at one time, about FTEs totally for the county, or if you wanna go one by one department. That's totally up to you.
Gentlemen?
My initial thought is just to try to not add any FTEs, and of course, we just added one for maintenance, but, um, anyway, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not gonna add two. I mean, he's got one that he can't fill. Seems to me like if he had people in these spots, maybe he wouldn't quite need so many.
Did he give us an org chart?
Did he give us one? No.
I'd say let's hold on until he gets us an org chart, property descri- or job descriptions for when he proposes new positions. Is that fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
That way, we can at least see what he's actually talking about.
Okay. Um, I don't know what's next in your home.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement.
All right. Six hundred. And I guess we can just hit on the highlights of what he was talking about. I'm still gonna firm up numbers on, um, the Mustang grant. Cause I'm gonna check. I'm pretty sure we're not gonna budget that revenue coming in, and also, it pays for a half-timer and some expense. I'll take the expense out based on that grant. Um, we did talk about upping federal prisoners.
So are we not gonna get that? I mean, they're not.
So far, no, as far as.
Okay. So are they gonna get rid of that halftime position or not?
Yes. We're not gonna budget it. We don't get the Mustang grant, we zip that out of their part-time, out of their budget. What?
Uh. I don't know how I take a half a person out.
Do you know who it is? You just take half their salary out, and let them know that that half salary's gone, therefore, it's a position. And since they don't have to do Mustang anymore, he can assign them to something else and reduce his part-time. Actually, that's probably what I would do, is I would probably reduce his part-time by that much. 'Cause he's got a guy who half-timed and spent on a grant. It's no longer being spent on a grant, so he's gotta sign him doing something else. What do you think? Sound fair? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we oughta throw that at Greg and just let him figure it out, but however he wants to do it, I mean. But if he doesn't have revenue coming in, he can't have the expense on it.
It's sixty thousand dollars a year. Right?
Yeah, it's a box.
The great paid half of his salary, yeah.
And the rest of it is a corporation. The expense goes to the different counties.
Sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-three thousand a year, and we send out forty-six thousand.
Right, the rest of it is to pay half-time of other employees in other.
Other counties, yes. Okay, um, I'm not sure, uh, revenue, if you guys wanted to increase the, uh, federal prisoners to five thirty, or if you wanted to leave it at the auditor's projection.
Could we look at that and get a number?
Well, I don't know if it's.
Did you work with Betty or Betsy and get that?
Um, Betsy's the one that proposed the five thirty.
No, we, remember, we had, didn't have the last two months in the system, or three months in the system when we looked at it, so. You guys were gonna get together and confirm that number? I even mentioned it to Betsy.
See ya.
I got one of them in.
I would be much more comfortable with that one, but.
What do we average from?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's all over the place, yeah.
No, it's an average. It's.
They're between thirty and forty.
'Cause it's clear that the March one was two payments.
Right.
So it looks like the lowest we ever got was thirty-six. And the largest we ever got was fifty-eight.
I think about forty-five is where you're.
So, yeah, I'd say forty-five is a good average, so five thirty makes sense to me.
That's less than forty-five. That's only thirty-five. That's, that's saying that the lowest month.
Do we wanna be conservative on that number, or do we wanna?
I guess what you need to be aware of here is, depending on their timing, that December amount may not get in there before the end of the year, depending on when that check comes.
I'm fine with leaving it at half a million. Yeah, I told, so, so last.
So what you're looking at right now might be the revenue for the year, because that amount in December.
So we only get paid, so we only get paid for eleven months of the year, even though we've been doing this for four years now.
It depends on the timing of the check, so you may see a double amount in January, depending on when that check actually comes back to us.
Right, and this year, okay. So in, in the end, it's a wash. What you're saying is our annual ought to be about five hundred and four, thirty-five, five hundred and forty thousand a year. We may not hit it this year, but if we don't hit it this year, we're gonna get a double payment in January, and therefore, it'll catch back up.
Right, so we haven't been doing this long enough to know the exact timing of that last payment. Sometimes you're gonna see it in January, sometimes you're gonna see it in December, depending on when they get.
But in any event, we should get twelve months next year, one way or the other. And twelve months ought to be five hundred and thirty to five hundred and forty thousand dollars, somewhere in that range, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can go half.
I would do five thirty.
I was gonna go in half.
That's a conservative number.
All right.
And then mental health, which is the next one right below it.
Well, that one's set, 'cause it's a set dollar, number of beds per day, per year.
Where are we at on that? 'Cause we, that was the other one we wanted you guys to confirm. Yeah, that's the one we're missing.
No, that takes a down, that takes a down. There's still two. Oh, well.
I don't know. That's why we need to find out what's going on.
But it should be a set number of beds per day for the number of days in the month.
So it's eleven thousand dollars a month, pretty much, no matter what?
Pretty much. I mean, some months they go thirty-one, some months they go.
That's fine. I'm good.
The one thirty-one, six hundred is their number of beds times days.
Okay, I'm good.
We've got medical services.
So if we increase their revenue, are we gonna offset it with contingency, or?
You ha- you will have to balance it, so let's go through and see if there's adjustments you wanna make on the expense side.
Revenue right now.
I understand.
We just made the contingency bigger.
This is the other one that she wanted to bump up to ten thousand. That seventy-five hundred was not in there when we did the budget, so.
What was that for?
Three fourths of their revenue came in.
Which one are we on? Oh, that's revenue?
Medical services.
Yes, medical services. So she wanted to bump the budget to ten thousand there.
That's fine. That makes less sense to me.
Two six one is at the bottom underneath the link.
You guys want any water?
I'm good.
No. Fine, thank you.
No, I'm good on that, too.
You're fine, but I didn't break it.
No, I'm fine with that, too. I think I overdid that earlier this morning. Plus, it's hot in here.
Sorry, the patronette's on it, he was upstairs over there.
We waste more time watching butterflies in here a lot of times.
I'm gonna just skip over personnel for now, we'll come back to those as far as whatever you might do. And equipment service contract, he would like it to go to one oh seven. I did get a list from him, and just so you know, I put this list out there under this, especially for you, Chris, you had asked about the services. I'm still waiting on a couple departments, but under the budget, fifteen, I put this new countywide maintenance services.
Okay.
And it's basically, I went through every department in a different color, sorry.
I don't wanna see that number. Wow.
So, what, you don't like those?
What was the total, did you total it?
Don't like the number.
No, I don't have the health, they're still working on theirs, and I don't have, um, what other departments?
I'll get you total real quick.
Part of juveniles, yeah, I don't have health.
I'm getting close to seven figures.
Uh, here, I'll give you the answer real quick, it takes two seconds.
Some bang.
More than that.
That ain't right.
Four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and nineteen cents.
Must've been a break there.
I was gonna say, could.
Four eighty, six four nine nineteen without health or juvenile.
No, I mean, the big ones are software, so there's not much you're gonna do with that. I mean, if you're looking at little, you know, Circuit Clerk, they're the highest, but I think they have like eighteen different copy machines slash printer.
For which we should have no service contracts. I'm just totally opposed to service contracts on copiers and printers.
Yeah, we did there.
We did it all together as one, uh, grouping, didn't we? That was last year.
Last year, this was the first full year.
Yeah.
And I have the security, I've got the Juvenile, you know, that's.
Yeah, the elevators.
That's gonna change, the elevators is a big one, that's just for four elevators, and we got two in the sheriffs, yeah, down here further. But here's the list of the sheriffs, the mules, the Interpol, I mean, there's a copy machine, there's another copy machine. I don't, that's the software, I'm pretty sure, and.
That's like a search.
Oh, it is, a search engine?
Well, it's a way to track people down that leads on, like, in the way that.
So, and a lot of this is connected to the phone system. I don't, and this is the security within the jail software, that thirty-six thousand. So I don't know, what's your, you can't, not even want to say. But a lot of this is Hoover, that's computer.
Yeah, I'll just go back to what I said the other day, you know, there comes a point where you can't afford everything. I mean, you can't afford body cameras, and you can't afford the data storage, and you can't afford all that stuff, and so, you know, we want and want and want and want, but.
How much does a copy machine cost? About five grand, sound right? We spent thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-one cents on copier maintenance agreements last year.
How much maintenance would we have had to have done?
How much would you pay it by the hour? That's five new copiers a year.
I know, it means every year, you could buy five new copiers, in fact, you could buy four, and every time you needed to do maintenance, you could buy a fifth one, just instead of paying the maintenance.
Well, we have some sophisticated copy machines, like plotters and planners and stuff at Road Bridge and.
I don't, I don't think Road Bridge was in this listing.
They may not have been, if they didn't specify it out.
Public Works. Uh, yeah, they do.
That's just what you had.
I don't know, I grabbed that one, yeah, I did, I got that.
Go figure out how much we spent on repairs and maintenance. Cause if we would had to pay them seventy-five dollars an hour to come look at it each time, to replace a part, to show up again.
Hey, I'm sure that's why when you buy your car, you go out and buy that super extended, double deluxe warranty on your car.
A lot of you don't replace a part anymore, they sit there on the way and buy a new one. Can't replace parts.
You know, it's one thing to have a copier maintenance agreement on a hundred thousand dollar copier. It's another thing to have a copier maintenance agreement on a five thousand dollar copier.
Let's talk about this another time, let's keep pounding.
Like, the one in civil over the sheriff. I think there is a case to pay maintenance on it, I mean, they go through probably four reams of paper a day. They run that much paper through there. And they said it was brand-new, and they've called the maintenance people like four to five times this year, just because it gets used so much. Unless you're going to actually replace theirs every year.
Chance has seven times.
Yeah, so, I mean, there, I think there is a case for some of them, I don't think that there is a case for every copier to have a maintenance agreement. I think if it's a high-volume copier that is used day in and day out constantly, I think there's a case for that. But I don't think that there is for a copier like.
Well, let's pound holes in the sand or what.
Yeah, let's talk about this another time.
Hey, can we? You were the one who started this whole discussion.
Well, yeah.
Now you wanna, now you got me interested in it, and you wanna walk away from it?
No, no. No, I'm with you a hundred percent.
Just not gonna do it today, let's get through the budget part of it, and then we can, we can hammer away at those.
I took you there based on this equipment service contract, he might up it to one oh seven. What that list was, was one oh six fifty, so I just plug that in there, and you tell me if you want me to leave it or not. And then, I also had to plug in a five thousand dollar extra, the rent/lease payment. The stipulations, the money that we invested with that other gentleman on the bond proceeds. Our value, according to the bond, has to stay at eight hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars at all times. And if March one of this year, our value of our three separate little bonds that we issue do not add up to that, we have to put the difference into that account to make sure it adds up to that, is that the way you understand it?
So.
What bonds?
When he went out to purchase the money market.
Mike?
The valuation of those at that point in time is less than the value of what we're supposed to be holding in, because they're maturing over time, we're accruing interest on them, so the value at that certain point in time does not meet the bond stipulation, we're about four thousand dollars off at the moment. We have to put the difference in at that point in time to make the value what it should be, we will get it back later on. It's just to make, meet our bond requirement, it has to be a certain value. So we have to put the four thousand in to make it cop是真的, and once we meet that value, our four thousand will come back.
What about any access over that value?
It's just grim, I mean.
To what, to law enforcement?
Yes. It stays in there.
It'll offset our payment, cause it'll get transferred into the.
So, and it was up to ten at one point, and now we're down to.
Four thousand.
I just put five to be safe.
That's fine.
What else?
He wanted a bunch more for investigations, holy cow.
Investigations, I must've missed that.
He, this year's budget's twenty-five hundred, he asked for twenty-five-five. Kristen knocked him down to fifteen thousand.
So, yeah, this is part of the Mustang.
Big increase.
This is part of the Mustang ramifications, they're trying to put buy money and things into the budget that Mustang no longer covers.
Mustang hadn't covered that. Didn't cover that this year.
They're asking, yeah, their, their proposal to me was that each agency was to put in ten thousand to recoup what they used to have from the grant.
We have an MOU from all the other agencies, everybody's putting in ten thousand? I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be running down the path to put in ten thousand, huh?
They wanted an additional ten thousand for equipment on top of that, and I cut it back to fifteen-five, so.
Equipment.
For Mustang.
But Mustang's gone.
I think, actually, the group is still out there, it's just not being funded by the grants.
Well, you know.
Whether or not we're still participating.
Somebody else can sign and take that grant.
I heard there was rumors that that was going to happen, another county.
If they're dumb enough to sign it, more power to them.
So where did, where did, where did they ask for the extra ten thousand for equipment?
Huh?
It was in that twenty-five.
Oh, it's in that, okay.
You're on the wrong thing. Oh, yeah, there you go, sorry, my bad.
He never said anything.
Sorry.
He never said anything when it came in.
So if it's equipment, that should come out of their capital, and not out of investigations, I would think.
Well, I think in this circumstance, that equipment would be owned by the Mustang group, not by us.
I don't remember when he came in and made his presentation, what he.
He did not bring it up, I think they were okay with the fifteen-five.
I think he was happy with your fifteen-five.
So.
Which I'm not sure I'm okay with. Why'd you put fifteen-five then?
I took the amount for equipment out, I gave him the ten thousand for buy money, but I took fifteen-five.
That's up to you guys.
I, I need to know more before, I'm good with the fifteen-five, I.
Go back to twenty-five hundred and tell them, when we see the contracts that say everybody else has agreed to put in money, we'll consider changing it.
Well, and this, also, if you're cutting back his person that belongs to Mustang.
Yeah.
I don't know if that has ramifications out to this line item.
Still in the salaries, isn't it?
Wasn't the prosecutor somebody giving him his money for?
So it would be half of that.
We're, we're cutting his income back, right? Cutting the, the grant out, we're taking the grant out, but in his salary line, doesn't he still have that person for, that was in Mustang in there?
Well, half of.
That's what we were saying, we're gonna cut his part-time, I think we proposed cutting his part-time, so have that guy to be able to reassign.
Right, but I mean, it's still in his salary, somewhere in the salaries as an expense.
Half of that person is, the full person is if you leave the grant in there, take the grant money out completely for most of it. You would have half of their salary.
Well, if you take the revenue out, and you're gonna take it out of the salaries, then it's a wash. I mean, I don't know where you're getting half.
The grant, the grant only pays for half of the salary.
But, but the other half is paid for out of his salaries.
Yes.
Right, so all of it is paid for out of his salaries.
Yes.
It's just that the revenue coming in was in the grant.
Half of it was in the grant.
Okay, well, half of his salary was in the grant, but part of his salary was in the grant, all of his salaries was in the salaries, so.
But you guys were talking about taking that, that half out of the salary line.
Right, right.
But whether, I think what Kristen is saying, of this fifteen thousand, how much of that buy money has to do with that grant? Even though we do have another expense line down below that is just Mustang.
Right.
So whether that has to do with that grant too?
I don't, I think they're saying that the grant is cut back so much, they're trying to pick up a portion of funding the Mustang through their regular budget.
So where, where are you giving him money back in Mustang down below there?
That's in that investigation line.
Okay.
So the investigation line should go to twenty-five hundred with a note that if he wants the extra ten grand, although it's thirteen grand, for buy money, that he needs to have this agreement with all the other players, saying they're all kicking that money in too. Cause my understanding of what he said, right? And then, with respect to the Mustang salary, we have to figure out what to do with that. That's the one, that's an outstanding item, we gotta figure out, we need to talk to him what his proposal is. Is that fair?
I agree, yeah.
Synopsis that, and then obviously, we take out the Mustang grant in fifty-eight, six eleven, on the next page.
Yeah, which he had it zeroed, yeah, he had it zeroed, or, or, yeah. The only other thing I see is this computer services that Greg had in his budget, and you zeroed out, Kristen.
They were wanting to, I think, move the money that is taken out of their transfer for computer services and actually hire someone within their department to work up.
Which, which may at some point have some merit to look at, but they still use our email system, they still use some of our computer systems. So it would be a percentage of it if we did that.
So they're basically saying that Dale's not able to do everything that they need done, and so.
I don't think they're saying that, they're saying they just wanna have their own person.
I think they did to allude to some of their stuff, like setting up new emails and things like that, they have some employees in their department that's doing some of that work that they would like to actually have a computer person to do this, but.
Are we gonna look at an IT, add more to our IT?
I still think we do, I think we need to take the spot that's.
Somebody was listening.
I walked out of a meeting and heard.
Sorry, I hope I explained that well enough, I don't, I don't.
The position that we moved over there, put it back.
Morning.
Okay, where are we on the Mustang, I'll ask you. Well, let's wait for Mark, I guess.
I was waiting for Mark.
Well, Mark knows, I mean, we, we recommended not taking the grant this year. The only thing the grant provided was slightly over half.
Still listening.
Of, since I'm not going to use names, but the, our Mustang, the guy who's the sergeant with us, who's responsible for supervising Mustang, and city has two, Fulton has one or two, and, and Boonville has one, and it's half of those salaries, that's the only thing that's on that grant. Mustang continues, no matter what. The unit continues. We've, over the years, lost buy money, we've lost expense money, we've lost salary money. And when they came up this year and said that now we would be responsible, as Cole County, to indemnify the state if there was any lawsuit, it became, it became to the point where it's not financially responsible to do that. So the question is, and what we shared with you when we presented it, is that would, that would mean that we would be asking that you pick up that other half of his salary. And that's, that's the indemn, we also have buy money in there, since for the first time, we're in a position where they're not doing any buy money. And you can't work narcotics unless you can buy them. So, any questions for me on that?
So the buy money is in investigations?
Yes.
And that's why you needed the twenty-seven or twenty-five-five?
Is that what it is? I don't have my glasses, I ran out of the office.
You guys submitted the twenty-five-five, I cut you back to fifteen-five, that included the, I think, ten thousand of buy money, but I think you had some equipment purchases.
Well, and we agreed that we'll, we'll make this work at the fifteen.
So, the Mustang group will continue, and that position won't, won't go away, it's just, you're asking us to pick up the other half of his salary.
And this has been coming for several year period, and actually, I started talking about it four years ago. Three years ago, this will be the fourth year.
So where do you think we're at on, do you think the state will reconsider their position?
No. No.
So there won't be any funding available at all?
I don't think so. And, and the, the issue is, of course, is that if, if they did consider next year, that we still couldn't get it back, cause it'd be supplanting at that point.
So I'm getting, the sixty-two thousand, it all comes out as far as revenue, right? Okay, and then, uh.
Well, and understanding that most of that money was not Cole County money.
Right.
Right, so forty-six of that went back out to other agents.
So that comes out on the expense side, okay?
And the difference was in our salary line.
Was ours, so I took both of those out, so.
Yeah, literally, the only thing was our salary line, which was half, fifty-two percent of his salary.
So you're gonna keep the person in force, and just keep doing the work, but just.
Yeah, well, we will, I mean, if we have to, if we have to terminate somebody, it'll be the last hire.
So how do we continue to fund some of these things as, as our funds continue to dry up and expire?
Chris, what, what I've done over the years is, this, this position was, we were doing Mustang grant position before I got here.
Right.
And I have chosen to not take people on on grant monies. And the reason for it is there's always a come-to-Jesus moment. And it seems to me that the better way to do it is work with the, the people that you can. And I think narcotics enforcement's a critical issue, and, and I, and this is just where we're at on it, it was. The, the issue is, is that we do away with the position, and it hurts us somewhere. Whether it's gonna be, well, I can't do it from jail, I shouldn't do it from patrol division. It's just painful.
Just, I mean, it just, it just seems to me that, I mean, of course, people that are moving narcotics are moving them across outside the city, across county lines, probably all over the place, and it seems like it oughta be more of a statewide effort or something.
It is.
I know you, and so, you know, we got statewide, then we got county people, and then we got city people, all working on the same kind of. I know, I know you, and so, you know, we got statewide, then we got county people, and then we got city people all working on the same kind of stuff or?
Well, but we work together on it.
Right.
We interface. And, and what I've tried to do over the years and have not been successful is, it, we, to do, get us to do what we did in Alaska. And what we did in Alaska is we just called it statewide narcotics. I mean, my call sign with Juno as a detective was, was, was one Delta nineteen, my call sign with statewide narcotics was one Z, one Z seventeen. And everybody that worked narcotics was deeded to statewide narcotics, and we had one unit statewide, and we still worked our areas, but it was one base, which is, I think, is a more effective way to do it. I find, I find down here that I'm the only agency that's willing to deed people like that. And so if we.
You're not a control freak.
Well, I, I am, but I'm a greater good freak over that.
Sure.
And that's, that's the issue. But since it is, it is the way it is, what, what I've chosen to do is not add people by grant. And, but again, I inherited, if I'd have been the one who started it, I would have recommended that we not do the salary line ever by grant.
Enough. Now I think we have to do something, so I don't, I don't know, where you got to.
It's not gonna go away.
No.
I mean, yeah, Russellville, we have it.
Well, and I'll give you, and I'll give you an example of the interagency cooperation. Columbia and Boone County are both part of Mustang, but they don't have salaries, any salary money funded out of it. And we had, we had a heroin-related death last week, and we know that it was, the heroin was purchased, in this case in Columbia. So the interface was already there, same people working, and it makes sense that way. And we know that for us, this, this, this multi-county area is, is, is its own little issue. If we need to interface with people in St. Louis, we've got that structure in place to do so, and we do it. If it's, if it's with the lake, we got the Lake Area Narcotics Task Force. And the task forces do reach out to each other, and the task force construction gives them statewide jurisdiction for the purposes in narcotics enforcement. And if we leave that, it doesn't.
Look who showed up.
Funny how that happened, you just happened to appear?
Well, you know, we were having actually an after-action report from my people to me on.
On commission meetings?
No, on the event, when I walked out, and shockingly, Betsy headed up and says, well, by the way, they're talking about our budget right now, and I go, really? I think I'm going up.
My take on is, we, you're gonna use it, or you gotta, you still do the Mustang stuff, we just gotta figure out where we're taking from. I mean, we got a, we got a pretty healthy amount of money coming in on the revenue side, so.
Yeah, but remember, it's long-term, and we have a spiral on the long-term, and if we, every adjustment we make today has a, every year impact.
Down the road. That's what I mean, take it from some other expense, we got, got somewhere to fill that spot.
And I'm, I'm always in favor of you giving us a little bit more of general revenue.
I know.
So I always gotta say that more tax.
I understand.
And, and you know, I, I mean, and if necessary, I'm willing to make an appeal to the business community in Cole County, if, if you want donations.
So the, the net is about a twenty thousand dollar difference.
Off the top of my head, I, I missed it.
Yeah, it's fifty-two percent of his salary benefits, it should be mainly the difference between the, yeah, that sixty-two and the forty-six.
Sixty-two and forty-six, so we're twelve plus four, sixteen, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, sixteen thousand dollars.
The difference between forty-six and sixty-four, sixteen?
Sixty-two and forty-six.
Sixty-two and forty-six.
Oh, sixty-two and forty-six.
Sixteen thousand dollars. I, you know, I understand that you can only put so many drops in a bucket or take so many drops out of a bucket, but in, in the overall construct, sixteen is, is a pretty small drop.
And we didn't just pick up about that much on the revenue side, did we?
Oh, no, we didn't, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen.
That, just to.
Where's, where's the big difference in, in Greg's salary request versus your, what you gave him, Kristen? Does that go to the, your restructuring that you were wanting to do, or?
Some of it is due to the turnover in his office. I mean, he does have a good established structure where he goes back to starting salary on positions. So even though the turnover is bad for him, it is good kind of for us because we do see that saving.
It's good for him, because it's good for his budget.
Well, it's good for Cole County's salary. And I, and I will tell you that one of the difficulties we've got is it's getting harder and harder and harder to get qualified personnel. And I think that's across the business structure as well. But you know, we've had people get through everything until it gets a polygraph. And then things come out on polygraph that would just.
Shock.
Shock the pockets off a kangaroo. I've had people apply that haven't dealt cocaine in the last two months.
That's probably good.
Yeah. And it doesn't come out until you get to.
So their salary line has the same salary increases as everyone else, and it has all of the same current positions, so no new positions, and same salary increases as everyone else in the county, so.
You guys have any more questions, Greg? I think I just have anything else marked throughout his whole budget.
Computer services, the sixty-four seven eighty was also to hire someone to help with computer services.
Yeah, and we'd mentioned that to you at one point. I, I, you know.
Where's that add-on here?
Computer services.
And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna tell you, we, and I know you take out a certain amount for, for that out of our budget before we get to budget. And, and of course, from our standpoint, we don't know what that money is used for as it comes through. We don't know, is that just personnel money, do we get hardware out of it, do we get software out of it? Don't know that. The, the other side is whether Dale wants to admit it or not, Dale's overworked. And we get issues in the middle of the night, and we need to be able to get those resolved, we need to get them resolved quickly during the day. Because for us, it's, you know, twenty-four seven operation just doesn't stop, and he's one guy, he cannot do that.
Can we get some kind of breakdown on what the computer services is for?
Currently, it's off of the study that we have, the indirect cost study that we have. It's based on storage space on the system, it's based.
On our system, not on his system, but on our system.
On our system.
And a portion of Dale's, it takes.
Well, I understand it has some Dale salary in it.
Right, so it's cost allocation of the IS department broken down to all of the other departments. So it goes through and it breaks down the cost of IS and spreads it across the county, and allocates its costs.
Plus the systems of how much each department has on within it.
You know, and, and there's, to me, it looks like there's several solutions. One of them is do nothing. One of them is we could program outside, or purchase, pro, pro, purchase that coverage outside. And thirdly, increasing Dale staff. And honestly, I don't care, I just don't like it when it's pulling teeth. At some point, y'all are gonna need to look at replacing the generator out here, because that generator is really aged. And there are certain things in this building that have to have that generator backup. And that's just another side note.
One over here.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
No, but I'm glad you mentioned adding another person for Dale, because I was going along those lines.
So I'm looking at information systems, Debbie, on page fifty-six and fifty-seven. And it says administrative fee reimbursement sixty-six eight seventy-seven.
So that's what we collect from other funds to reimburse the cost of IS. The rest of his is internally within.
So basically, all of IS were charged into law enforcement. Because that's about what we're pulling out of law enforcement, isn't it?
No, that's sixty-seven.
Or half of it, I think.
That sixty-seven includes the assessor, road bridge.
I understand that, but I'm just saying.
We should track that.
We take out forty-five thousand, maybe?
Do you have the breakdown of what?
Does that sound right?
I'm trying, I thought it was thirty-four, but I, I don't recall for sure either.
Oh, let's see, I got it here.
And that sixty-seven doesn't include the sheriff's portion, because we take it directly out of the transfer.
Oh, you take it out of the two million forty?
Right, right, so that sixty-seven is just assessor, road bridge, and now.
So it seemed to me like it, that was probably forty-three then, what was the transfer in?
Transfer in, yeah, that's right.
When it like, one nine nine seven or something?
The assessor is sixty.
Transfer in, one nine seven five.
One nine seven five, and we promised twenty forty.
Yeah, so it's forty-five thousand.
I still think it's two point two thousand.
No, it's sixty-five thousand that we're pulling out.
Yeah, sixty-five thousand, yeah.
For IS. And all the other departments, non-GR funds, only contribute sixty-six thousand. And the sheriff's department has the same number of employees, and maybe a few more than Public Works.
Yeah, no, double.
Double?
Yeah.
And not all of the employees.
EMS has.
Double. Well, full-time, about forty.
So Public Works plus EMS combined ought to be the same amount as the sheriff's.
It depends how much storage space they're using up on those drives, how much backup information they have, it goes into all of that, kind of, the data that's being held on our servers, on our stuff, for the sheriff versus all the other departments.
And we also haven't had this done in three years. So next year would be the year, I mean, it's gonna change some.
So what are you?
Oh, it just seems like it's a, I mean, it's.
It's a lot of money.
It's, you know, the entire information systems budget's three hundred thousand dollars, entire budget. The majority of that budget is equipment services contracts, of which most of the equipment services contracts don't really apply to law enforcement, because he pays for his own out of his fund. So when you take out of that, i- if you take out the ones that he simply would have no application for, I mean, you're gonna get down to two hundred and seventy-five, maybe three hundred, or two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for their budget. And you're getting the majority of it from three departments. When some of it's sunk costs, that is incurred by us, and Clark, and Health, and all these other ones that don't have independent funds.
But there are some things that are county-wide software.
I understand, I understand that.
Okay.
But.
Within Dale's budget.
But not all of it's county-wide software stuff in his budget. Right?
No, not all of it.
This is really.
Or just thinking of the phones.
Yeah.
No, I, no, I agree.
But, so, and then like, a portion of the county software, because they usually have.
It gets allocated, a portion of the Cisco stuff gets allocated, I understand that.
But yeah, there's a large portion.
I mean, like, the, the Cisco, which is the phones, it's however many phones we have in the county divided by what that percentage is theoretic, theoretically.
Right.
I mean, something, we can have that study, look into, you know, more, or go a different direction.
It, it, from my standpoint, it's partially that, and, and, but Dale needs help.
Yeah.
And he need, there, and again, whether he wants to say it or not, there needs to be.
I think we all agree with that, actually. We talked about that last week, about how we need to, we need to have a real I, a real IT department.
And, and I think at some point, part of that inclusion, which is not always cheap, is going to have a greater capacity to protect our information systems. And, and I pass a lot of information on to Dale when I get it from other sources, but it, you know, I, I can tell you, I've talked to some of the information systems people at the Capitol, and they can, they can sometimes tell me how many times they've been probed in, over the weekend, for instance, and it's very intriguing.
I don't disagree that we need to look at it, but, I mean, as long as we have all these equipment and software contracts, you know, it, that's, that's all our software, and they should be able to do that stuff over the phone, so.
But it's not, but it's not just software, it's not just software's the problem. I mean, there's hardware issues, and there's, there's reprogramming of devices, there's, there's, when, when we, when we get, when we get a virus that hits. I mean, it's just continual stuff like that. And it's not gonna get easier, it's not gonna get less. After the last discussion on those, I had somebody stop me at coffee's and then go, so what's the solution? And I go, honestly, the solution is steno pads and pencils.
There we go, get rid of all the computers.
But then, then we need to talk personnel for what the savings is by the electronics. Because it becomes huge when you start looking at the transcription process.
Computers aren't that great, huh?
No, they are.
To a point.
All right, any other questions on sheriff?
Did you look at, did we look at capital on sheriff? Are we good with that number, or?
Oh, well, I think the big thing was whether you wanted to put that sixty thousand back in there for that they did, they are not spending this year. Is that the take on it then? I'll get up his request here, the latest one that, I think Wheeler sent me after your last, like, hearing.
Well, I could have John come over.
I don't have a problem with it.
The only thing to keep in mind, the law enforcement budget this year was the limited balance. So again, if you took out the carry forward and the contingency, their basic revenue and basic expense weren't balanced. So any additions that you make, especially large ones to the expense side of their budget, if the cash forward doesn't come in any higher, you're creating an actual deficit in their budget.
So when you roll that money that's in there from this year and the next year, you're taking it?
So as long as the cash comes in higher than what we projected it to be, then you're okay?
And right there is the new list of capital, we'll take it up compared to what Kristen had in there. I think there was a, a difference in, I don't know if it was the cameras, or was it the body camera deal?
Body cameras.
Yeah.
Body cameras and finishing the, the dash cams.
So they're at three ninety-one fifty.
So I'll go back to your statement that you made. So when that money rolls forward, that cash forward of sixty thousand, you're saying that that's gonna affect their?
Well, that's revenue to us.
It's just a carry forward.
So it.
But you didn't carry forward money in your budget, or not?
In their budget, I projected them spending all of their capital improvement. So yes, as long as there's not any other large expenses that I didn't annualize correctly. I'm saying we projected cash to be at that point.
You don't have any other large expenses, do you? That haven't already been paid?
I don't, I don't have a crystal ball that tells you exactly what it is, but as far as my projection was concerned, I projected them spending all of their capital improvement. So you would assume that yes, there should be excess cash that you're in, but I'm not gonna guarantee that that's.
I, I would tell you, it looks like I have a freebie coming. It looks like I'm gonna get a, a new one-stop station that does photo, iris, and fingerprint. And our fingerprint, electronic fingerprint machine is getting near its age limit, so it was really nice that this came out, and it looks like I'm gonna get that installed free. So, and that's, that's a pretty big dollar item, so I'm pretty excited about that.
That is a big dollar item.
Are you still, I mean, the record's still the fingerprint, I mean, you're still not doing retinal scan or?
We do three, we do, we do iris scan, which is the colored part of your eye. We do, we do the photograph, and we do the fingerprints, all three. Called the trifecta biometrics.
I'm good.
Okay.
So is, I guess I'll change it to three ninety-one fifty for the capital?
What do we have?
I disagree.
What do we have on there? Three sixty-three? What was the difference?
Basically, those cameras, body cameras.
I mean, I think the body cam, the only thing I would say with the body cameras is, there might be an opportunity to get some of them for free.
And if that arises, we would go that.
And obviously, if we rush out and buy all the body cameras, and then it turns out later we could have gotten some for free, we won't get any for free.
Right, and the question, well, a- actually, at some point, this is gonna get broadened to include jail staff. Because there's places you go that are not on camera, and that's another option for that.
Over two hundred and some cameras, there's still places.
I'm, I'm not, I don't know.
Over two hundred, actually.
Well, but jail cameras are different than the patrol cameras. The jail cameras, you'd only really need, when they would come into the facility, they could put it on.
Ten.
Yeah, it's a much smaller number.
Yeah.
Whereas the patrol guys, they gotta have it, because they could pop out in the middle of the night.
Right.
They don't always come in here to.
Right, they don't always have to come in.
Stage and go.
Well, and, and as Mark was saying, the call-out potential is pretty high for us.
I'm not a hundred percent sold on body cameras, I think. I don't know, I, I see pros and cons to both, and I just, I'm not sure that it's.
The one reason I'm looking a little stronger at it is as the new tasers, devices are coming out, we're getting fewer and fewer of them that we can use taser cameras on. And one of the things that's kept us out of court with tasers is simply because we can flip the site, the camera's on, and, you know, nobody wants that in court.
Yep.
We, prosecution wants it in court.
Okay.
Well, if it does become a mandate, it'll be an unfunded mandate, so it's not a mandate then.
Well, if it comes from the state, it's an, it has to be funded or we don't have to follow it.
Right.
If it comes from the federal government, it was awful nice that they did that just to pay for it.
Yeah.
But they have to have a string to make it work. They can't do it just on their own, they have to have a string. So if federal government comes in and says you have to have a, all, all your people have to have body cameras effective next year, you can say, "No," and they can't do anything. Yeah, and they can say, "We're gonna pull all of your, any funding that you get that's through any federal program will be barred if you don't have body cameras by the end of this year."
Like housing federal prisoners.
Then, then you have to look at the dollars and say, "Yeah, maybe the body cameras are worth it now."
And the other side of it is, we do try to be proactive on some of this. When I was a cop in Alaska, while we didn't use body cameras, we, we had recorder, we, we carried pocket recorders. And I will tell you that it was shocking how often that it was a great thing in court.
So are we leaving it all in Capital from this? I guess I didn't follow our own conversation.
I think that's what we just said. Thanks Greg.
But we can leave it in and we don't have to.
You don't have to spend it.
Spend it. But is that in ours or is that in?
That's in his.
His. Yeah, so if it's in there, he can spend it.
Theoretically, yeah.
Okay, then what did we end up doing with the half-timer for Jack?
I was out of here when you guys talked about that.
Well, it's basically gonna cost us sixteen thousand dollars to continue paying his, the other half.
From...
I mean, so I think we just decide that at a later date or something.
That is the difference between the revenue and expense side.
So we just keep paying the part-time guy. We just add, or no, not, we just keep paying the Mustang guy his full salary and it just is an increase in our expenses.
And the law enforcement expense?
Yes.
We're not pulling it from general revenue and paying it?
No.
No.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, because we never really did say we were...
That was never even a discussion!
But I'm okay with the GR thing.
What did we just said about the fifteen thousand five hundred in investigation back or not?
He said he was fine with the fifteen five because that was the buy money. So if we can do the fifteen five, he was fine with it, right?
As long as he gets the agreement from everybody else. Greg? It's up to you guys.
Agreements for what?
That the other entities are gonna put in that buy money.
Let's give it a Greg and see if we can...
Because that was the concept of buy money was Mustang, the grant used to pay for buy money, it no longer pays for buy money. So all the other entities were gonna contribute for buy money.
Well, I guess when he sat here and talked though, he said that he has...
It's for buying, or the buying...
Right, right, buy money.
And the grant used to pay for it, but doesn't.
Right, but everybody was gonna get together and do it and that was gonna be our share, but I don't want it to be our, you know, why would we contribute the money if nobody else is gonna contribute the money? Then our money goes to Boone County or wherever and they're spending it.
Where does all their drug confiscations and cash confiscations go? I thought a lot of that was supposed to be used at...
Well, drug confiscations has to be destroyed.
Right.
Well, they actually have to be turned over to the Fed and every once in a while, you'll see there's a line item where we actually get a portion of that back. Criminal access fee here.
So under administration?
We don't see a lot of it come back, except that drugs is more of the guns and stuff.
I see.
Right, so we turn those over to the Fed, they're destroyed on their end.
It's not like with federal government, it's where they just hide you, they just hold you out. They decide that, you know, your landscaping company is a front, they seize everything. And then you can prove that you didn't do anything. That doesn't mean you get your money back, but you can prove you didn't do anything.
A lot of that goes to the schools instead of to the counties.
But if the feds take it, none of it goes to schools.
Okay.
So I think we have one...
So that's why, that's why they no longer do it here. Is because if a police department seizes a car in a crime and turns it over to the feds and the feds sell it, then the police department gets the money for it, or a portion of the money for it. If a police department seizes a car, sells it, then all the money has to go to schools. Which, because our constitution says all the proceeds of fines and forfeitures have to go to the public schools. And that's real common, it's most constitutions in this nation say that.
And that's what you see kind of in the schools with their fines and penalties is other places getting fined and things.
That's why they work so, the law enforcement agencies work so hard to only go through the federal government on forfeitures because they get money out of it, it makes it more profitable for law enforcement.
Okay, well, the last one we have is EMS enterprise fund.
Page.
One twenty-eight.
Did you do sales tax? EMS sales tax?
You wanna do the sales tax before the enterprise fund?
Sure, that's easy.
Yeah.
That's a page before? No, we never did this one.
We didn't do EMS?
So how much, we're getting five point four million, basically in revenue?
Yes. And we're anticipating a million carry forward. So we're looking at six point six.
Million seventy-five carry forward.
That's af, that's after having paid for everything out at Jefferson.
And first responders, you see there, you also see the nine-one-one, we pay half of it out of there, the...
You probably do need to increase the tax, increase the taxes.
Ambulance amount's gonna be less next year, isn't it, because we're just doing remounts?
Mm-hmm.
Let me get up his capital.
I don't remember what the dollar amount is, but we're just doing remounts next year, so it's, so it's less than two hundred thousand dollars.
That's right at two hundred, I think.
I think it's right at two hundred.
A little over ninety thousand.
Oh, okay. That was a little bit less than that.
Was two forty, I think.
Okay.
Two ninety, yeah.
Two ninety was two ambulance.
Yeah, but we only actually spent two fifty-seven on two ambulances, if they were cheaper.
There's his request, two of them.
We jumping over Capital?
Yeah.
What's the Capital request? Ambulances, the monitors, there it is, right there.
I know, but I'm trying to get this where you can see.
Is that all of it? Yep. So the ambulances, we've already talked about that. The monitor replacements, so the cardiac monitors.
That's the cots and the mounting upgrades.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
I think most of that was cots, wasn't it? Ambulance cot mounting upgrades was a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Is there some kind of new way to hold the cot in the, in the box, that it has to be a new cot that works with the new mount? Something to that type?
I, uh, I don't know how to say this and not sound bad, but anyway, it's like we got the best and the greatest of everything and I think, I think that's awesome, but at the same time, it's, I mean, it just seems like, I mean, we gotta have every gadget and whistle and, and along with that comes an enormous cost for everything, those, those cardiac monitors at forty thousand dollars apiece. I mean, I, I just, yeah, do we have the money to do it? Sure we do, but it, uh...
The questions are necessary.
Well, yeah, I think, I think that's a good point and, you know, how many, how many other people have those? How many other ambulance districts have those, so?
You know, I would say, just my two cents on that particular comment. I don't wanna hold how we do ambulance service to comparison to how other people do it, particularly if they do it at a lower budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they may say, you know, we don't really care about upgrading that equipment. And everybody, and you could go to St. Louis or Kansas City and they say, "That's the first thing we upgrade," you could get different.
Right.
So, you know, my view would be, you know, the, the way to look at those kind of upgrades, one, we control this fund. So no matter what you put in it, nothing, not a dime gets spent unless we say it gets spent. So it's unlike an elected official fund, so that's one advantage. Second is, I would just get Mike up here and say, you know, "Are these necessary? Why are they necessary? You know, why, why are the old ones not working? Why do we need to upgrade to these new ones? What are the issues?" And flush all that out. And you may at the end say, "We don't need to do that," or you might say, "Yeah, we need to do that." But without all that discussion, I think it's very hard to know when he submits things like that.
And all of these are gonna come to you within a bid form, so you'll have final rejection if you don't want to.
And as, they gotta come to us before we bid it.
Yes.
Before we bid it. So there's a lot of opportunity to really discuss how that money gets spent.
I agree.
To the extent it's in a line, it's like a placeholder. Because I agree with you, I think that, you know, that there are, there are still lots of needs in the ambulance system. We're not addressing all the needs. One of the needs is potentially expanding the coverage. That comes with a lot more operational cost, which then means we have to look at how do we handle the operational cost? We're running a operational surplus of what? Seven, eight hundred thousand a year? Does that sound right? Million a year?
On the budget for next year, it's only like two hundred thousand dollar difference between carry forward and contingency, losing two hundred.
Yeah, but we also spent one point four million.
Exactly.
So...
So, yeah, we have potential to gain three, four thousand.
We, we gain about a million a year.
I think it's about that.
Maybe a half.
I'd say about half.
Half a million a year. So, you know...
Depending on what you guys, what your vision is.
Those are things to have to look at.
Yeah, I mean, by, by and large, I think we've done a great job. We've updated the fleet, we've got, we've got new vehicles, we got the, the best vehicles probably in the state. But at some point, you just can't, can't continue, you know, with the tough books and the, you know, the best cardiac monitors and assisted lift cots and, and, you know, so, I mean, yeah, there's all that play and work comp claims and different things, yeah. And so that's something that we have to look at, but, um, you know, all these, all these things have an enormous price tag. And just like those Life Pac fifteens, I mean, you know, the difference between those and a Life Pac twelve is, you know, thirty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Each.
Well, and depending on what your vision for nine-one-one is, that's still...
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to look at, you know, and I realize that the sheriff uses a lot of that nine-one-one too and by and large, we take some of that out of his budget, but, um, I mean, this is a healthy fund and, um, so I don't know, that's probably a different discussion, but...
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think long-term, when we took over the ambulance service, the first thing we said we were gonna do was upgrade the fleet. That was the first thing we were gonna do as far as major...
Right.
Excuse me, changes. We upgraded the fleet, that's been done. The next thing we said was we needed to have a good basing facility. And we've done the good basing facility. So the first two priorities we talked about, we've done. The third priority that we talked about was looking at expanding service out into the county, farther out.
Response time view or just, yeah?
And, you know, that's, that's, that's the more expensive, you know, it's the reason, I hate to say it, I mean, it'd sound bad, but it's the reason we promised upgrading the ambulances and doing the base first was because those were one-time costs. The expanding, the reach, and we did some expanding right off the bat because we had, we, we brought them back up to what Cap Region had is it's basically its max number. And then we did the upgrades and we did the base, then we said we'd look at putting another ambulance out in the county.
Basing it on the response time and then the zero, uh...
Right, zero calls.
Status zero or whatever. We wanna try to eliminate that, which I think we've done pretty good at doing it. I think the big difference, though, we can't compare ourselves to pretty much anybody because we are a county ambulance system and there's one or two other ones statewide.
Yeah.
So the other ones are, they're not lucky enough to have half cent, or quarter cent sales tax to support it. And then, I mean, I don't mean to be saying I'm gonna give him everything he asked for, but what other stuff could he be asking for? Maybe this was the one that rose to the top of the cream and maybe that's the one that he says, "If I gotta ask for something, this is what I wanna ask for." But I, I think it's, we need to ask him, you know, how, how important is this to have this? If my mom's in that ambulance and this is something that I would want you to have to save her life, how important is it? Is it gonna be some, or can they get it to the hospital and get it done too, so? Because that's a big chunk of change, so...
Yeah, everything that he brings us is expensive, so...
Yeah. There's something about public safety, no matter what, especially in public safety, that makes sirens or noises or something.
Yeah.
We'll just go from there and what we're transferring over to the enterprise fund as of now is this one point one million. So we'll just jump over to the enterprise fund. And again, that's just a balance so far compared to the money they bring in. So I don't think, if there's any, no questions on the revenue, we'll just go into an expense. And I know the biggest part of his request is a new FTE supervisor. And again, we can address all that at one time. He would like to increase his overtime too.
No.
Okay, besides that, I did have...
I'm just one, but I want him to decrease his overtime.
You know, I agree, it's something we've struggled with the whole time. That has been one of the most difficult things we've struggled with the whole time.
But the thing about the overtime is we've got mandatory overtime that we adjust to pay for that is in that, right?
I do have a spreadsheet that I've been working on, thinking of their actual schedule and comparing the actual time worked. I will bring down when we discuss salaries if you'd like to take a look at. And you can see what just switching one shift actually the problems that it creates. And you can see there's a lot of moving of shifts, so...
To create overtime for somebody else, they play the system like we talked about before?
I don't know if they're playing the system, I can't, I can't say that in any way, shape or form, but I will show you the spreadsheet that I've been working on and you can make it a...
We can draw our own conclusions.
Yeah.
Yeah, because all we've ever told them, let them supervisors won't let them move their shift if it's gonna cause overtime.
I thought, yeah, I thought we had talked to them specifically about that. Don't let them play that game, go, "Hey, I'm gonna call in sick this week, you'll get the overtime, you call in sick next week, then I get the overtime."
I'll just let you take a look at the spreadsheet and you can draw your own conclusions. I'll be happy to bring it down if you wanna look at it.
And all we have is the spreadsheets, we don't know what happened that, that particular day, that particular hour.
Reason for the change.
Are we gonna dress overtime then at a later date then, or?
Well, it's up to you, I don't, well, overtime is an easier one, if you just say no, we'll just leave it right where it is.
Leave it at the four eighty?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that too unless he can come up and specifically say, "Here's why we're getting," I don't...
Where's he at right now?
He's at four sixty-seven right now, annualized.
Well, that's annualized, but what, what's actual, because we should just have one month left, right?
I'm trying to remember what he, because he did talk about that when he came up here.
I mean, I've only been here a couple of years, but he's come here and asked for more overtime money every year and I think even the year before I was here, he was asking for more.
He's asked for it every year and I, you know, I, I do understand why.
We're at four hundred twenty-five thousand right now. He's obviously, we'll make it this year, but we made a transfer in, so...
But that got us to the four eighty, right? The fifty-five, yeah.
So fifty-four.
I'd kind of, wouldn't put it the same way as kind of what I was saying about the sheriff's budget. If you're gonna increase that, you're gonna find somewhere else to take it from and stay within your means.
So I think the four eighty's reasonable compared to this year, so...
If I'm gonna eat out sometime and I wanna have steak, then I'm just, I'm not gonna buy the boy's toothpaste or something. No, I'm just kidding, I'll get the toothpaste.
You're gonna buy them chicken nuggets, huh?
They're gonna baloney. Hot dogs. Hot dogs and macaroni and cheese goes together pretty good though.
I did look at the insurance line.
You can feed them.
Yeah.
I did look at the insurance line compared to the bill I have.
Hey girl, David, keep it going.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
No.
And then I'm gonna reduce the liability, it went down, but automobiles went up, we got more newer vehicles, so that's all I can say about that one. Lease payment, again, that's the actual cost. We have an agreement with those four, three fire stations to pay them, pay their utilities and stuff, so I did have to up that because we just did a transfer.
Can I talk about the one T?
Did we not have any history on that, those rent lease payments?
This is the first year.
We didn't pay anything last year or this year?
That is the actual for this year.
Okay.
Utilities, I'm not sure if that's one he touched or if that's one I...
I think that's you.
Based on what they've actually used, we need twenty-one thousand in there.
Do I do the one T S one?
I don't know which one's it.
Base service charges, they are using more credit cards and it's based on the number of swipes, so their fees are going up because they're swiping more cards, so that one I agree with.
So, hang on a second. So we're getting charged for a bank service charge when people use their credit card?
Yes.
And we don't charge them back?
No, in that fund we can, for service like that. They also get charged for lockbox, so the more payments that come through the lockbox... They also get charged for lockbox, so the more payments that come through the lockbox, the more fees we pay. So there's actually two sets of fees in there. One is the lockbox fees, and one is the credit card fees.
Okay.
So what, what do you think?
The same thing with the health department. When we're actually providing a service like that, we can't charge the fee back. If we're collecting a fee from someone, like taxes, or like restitution upstairs or something, you can charge the fee back to the person, 'cause they're using it as a way to pay us for the, what they owe us.
And we're using it to basically get our money now from.
Are we adding that into the fees that we charge?
I do not know that.
I think Mike needs to reevaluate that. He needs to reevaluate that on all the services that, you know, that fee structure of different types of events, what he charges. We haven't changed that since we, well, we added a couple. But we need to really look at that every year, and I think he should bring that to you.
Okay.
And I know that Penny does a really good job working with Med Serv, and we've tried to eliminate some of the larger insurance companies or anybody from using the credit card to pay.
We didn't allow them.
Because, I mean, the larger amount you're paying, the higher the fee, so.
Right.
She's tried to hold them back and work with Med Serv and say, "If you're an insurance company that pays on a regular basis, you need to pay us in some other format than the credit card."
Yeah, I think Med Serv absolutely. So what, how much do you think can raise funds?
Bank service charges, I almost think it needs to be.
Ninety-five hundred.
Ten-two is where, he was, I almost think ten-five, but that's just my opinion.
'Cause I know what we're going right now.
Well, and it's gonna get worse if you look.
We're going forty-nine.
Our bank service charges.
And I still have one, I think one to go.
So ten-five?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Then building supplies, he wanted an extra thousand dollars, and he's at six right now in ours, and he wanted stubborn. I will say that this one is kind of a hodgepodge of things and miscellaneous items. They take lots of trips to Lowe's for random things, so.
And hopefully with this new building.
Yeah, that oughta go way down.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I haven't been seeing that, so I don't, I believe it works that.
Greg?
We did ask for a list of equipment service contracts, I don't know if he submitted it.
Yeah.
I don't think he asked for anymore, but he was at fifty-five thousand.
And those basically are the three.
Physio, service bridge, physio.
So how come on telephones, you're at eighty-seven hundred when we've spent?
I split, they were paying their internet and telephone together.
Okay.
We tried to hold everybody else to just local long, so I split his internet out.
Okay. You wanted a thousand more in medical services, I see that.
And I don't, I think that's actually stereotypical, it's like picking up of sharps and things like that.
Medical waste.
I don't have a problem with that either. It looks like he's gonna be over this year. You want number five reaching six to one?
So we're going to eighty-five hundred?
Seven-four now?
So eight thousand.
So he's four hundred over what I had in the budget, so.
So go to eight? That's what he suggested was eight.
Eight, that's what I had then.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Those were the only ones he actually.
Guys, got anything else on that? No. It's the office equipment furniture one.
He just kinda wants to have.
Yeah.
When he's sitting there in case he needs to buy a monitor or something comes up.
What? Isn't that what office equipment is?
No, I think he's bought him like a chair or.
He's got all kinds of new chairs.
Tables, so.
Oh, give him zero.
Toolbox.
Zero.
I think that's a monitor.
Zero equipment, office equipment out, furniture, he can always bring that to us.
Yeah.
We've never had a new.
Splatter cover, cutting board.
Only other thing I got, and I'm bringing up, uniforms. I mean, I, I understand that people need uniforms, and of course, I'm seeing all these other county officials with monogram stuff and everything else, but it seems like EMS has stocking caps and ball caps and visors, and, I mean, it's a little more extravagant than just pants and a shirt and whatnot, so.
Go with Sheriff's Department.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, I don't disagree there too, but it's a.
Why don't we just have him come up and explain it?
I mean, I, I don't mind outfitting somebody, but.
I do know we bid their base, base uniforms, pants.
Pants and shirts, right?
Yeah.
But then I got jackets and.
They get a jacket too.
And then I got polar fleece stuff.
Yeah, on top of that, I don't know.
Just have him come up and explain it, let's use his spreadsheet.
Well, I'd like to see it, how often they get replaced, his, his, whatever you call that.
We'll pull up his account.
Allowance. No, I mean, how often does he let me, Jane, come in and get a new pair of pants?
Look at fifty-three, two ninety-seven, one.
But it's not gonna tell you how.
Well, it will tell you how often you're having to order.
I think it's constant, but I could be wrong.
This one?
Nope, one below it. That one. There's one great, big humongous one.
And I think that's their main pants shirts.
He pretty much orders and keeps a supply.
Right, that's the idea, and then he gives it out, and lets those in actual size.
Go up, go up, go up, what's the bottom two? Nope, down one, bottom two, great big ones.
Spring something?
Spring uniforms.
There probably is shirts, sleeve shirts too.
So I think they keep stock and then.
I mean, obviously, if you get, sometimes those uniforms do get destroyed.
Yeah.
And I understand that. All right, I just suggest to you, have him come up at some point and kinda give an explanation, a walkthrough on the whole process with uniforms. That way, at least you know what he's doing. Anything else? Jeff? Sam?
No.
We could through the budget.
We've done the budget.
Now, I do want some, I, I really do not.
Do you have capital improvement tomorrow?
We already did it. We've done everything, we actually done the budget.
Well, everything but salaries.
We just left.
Salaries and personnel.
We left all the capital improvement stuff in there.
I could do Eugene Ward if you wanted. We kinda, kinda dismissed.
It's noon, I need to probably scoot.
Let's put that under maintenance too. We could really get Greg going.
So can we cancel the commission meeting tomorrow?
No.
Come on, guys! I don't wanna do this tomorrow.
I don't wanna be a pirate.
All right, wait, 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 salaries.
Tomorrow.
I would like to.
Oh, that's why you wanted to cancel tomorrow.
Me and Chris, we can get together, show you the FTEs that people are wanting, bring everything to you. I really would like directions before the end of the year, as to what you guys are thinking about salaries for next year. I know what you think, because you have to wait till the end of the year to get carried forward balances, but once you get into next year.
We've always done that, we've, we've never put our salary information out.
I, this has to be in the paper on the twenty.
Right, and we've never included the salary information, ever when we published it.
Yeah, we have.
No, we haven't, 'cause we fought over it till the last day.
I don't remember.
We always fight over it.
Well, I knew we always fought over, but I didn't remember if we fought till December twenty-third or January four.
We had to put everything else out early, and we said, "Let's see what the final budget, the final balances are, and then we can make a decision where we're at as far as pay adjustments." We've always done it.
Just a two cents. It would be nice to start that a little earlier in the year in the budget process. Not necessarily you know what you're going to do, but if they would submit some sort of plan, if they had merit money, or if they had money to disperse, how they would do it. Because if you do wait until you approve the budget on, say, the tenth, to turn around pay forms for the end of the month is very hard to do, if they have to come up with.
You got till the thirty-first this year, Sam.
Evaluation?
Yeah.
'Cause you're near, you get till the thirty-first to approve the budget.
Unless you want to somehow ride it to where the salary changes don't take effect until February, you know, to give them some time to come up with. I hate to push it on them and make them rush through and do something. I would like them to come up with a plan of how they would distribute, or do their evaluations and know how they would rank their people or whatever if they had to give out money.
It's a great idea, actually. Send a memo out, say they have to submit their plan.